Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for May 15, 2018. If we could call the roll please.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Thank you. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda item number three, Mr. Reynolds, any changes, additions, or leagions?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Okay, thank you. Moving ahead to item number four, consent agenda, Councilor Lehman.
Do we want to approve the agenda?
Oh, that would be helpful.
But that's not why I raise my hand.
Uh, okay, Councilor Lehman.
Let's add a other business item on here somewhere. Wherever you prefer.
Uh, 9A1.
A1. Okay, I'll move the agenda as modified.
I have a motion for a modified consent, modified agenda in a second. Any discussion? Discussion? Discussion on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving ahead now to item number four, consent agenda. Are there any changes, additions, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
All right. Councilor Whiting?
Please poll 4A1.
4A1?
Yes.
Councilor Lehman?
Uh, 4E5.
4E5. Have a couple removed. Councilor Lewis?
4E3.
E3.
And 4E4.
What was the second one?
E4, back page.
Councilor Lewis, did you have a conversation with city attorney the other day in regard to 4A3?
Does that have anything to do with what we're doing here?
Okay. Um, Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I'll move the consent agenda as modified.
I have a, a motion and a second from Councilor Whiting. Before we vote on the consent agenda, we will read the modified consent agenda into the record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for May 15 of 2018. 4A2 approves the minutes of the May 1st, 2018 meeting. 4A4 approves an application and grants a temporary on-sale 3.2% malt liquor license to Shakopee Lions Club at Toppa Park for the time period of June 2nd through June 4th of 2018. 4A5 awards a contract to replace fire station number one windows, exterior sealant, drywall, painting, and millwork in amount not to exceed $160,106. 4B1 adopts resolution number R2018-TAC-063, which approves updates to the fire department policies. 4C1 adopts resolution number R2018-TAC-065, which approves the final plat of Prairie Meadows Second Edition. 4C2 adopts resolution number R2018-TAC-067, which sets a public hearing for a proposed vacation of drainage and utility easements in the Stagecoach Business Center plat. 4D1 declares listed property held by the police department as surplus property and authorizes its proper sale or disposal. 4D2 authorizes purchases of new automated external defibrillators. 4E1 adopts resolution R2018-TAC-058, which prohibits parking on both sides of MSAS 133 from Pike Lake Road to CSAH 18. 4E2 adopts resolution number R2018-TAC-062, which approves plans and orders the advertisement for bids for the 2018 Trail Rehabilitation Project, CIF-TAC-18-TAC-001, and the 2018 Trail Overlay Project, PA-TAC-18-TAC-01. 4E3 adopts resolution number R2018-TAC-061, which approves plans and orders the advertisement for bids for the 2018 Sanitary Sewer Lateral Pipe Rehabilitation Project, SEWER-TAC-18-TAC-003. And that is the final item on consent. Mr. Mayor?
The modified consent agenda has been read into the public record. I have a motion in a second. Uh, no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving ahead to item number five. Now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. And welcome.
Jigga Mokel? I am here to thank the Public Works for letting us see the sewer system and the other, um, things they do, like the truck wash and making and doing the, um... This snowplows.
My favorite part about the thing was probably all the trucks and the cars and them all getting washed.
My favorite part was seeing all the different vehicles and how big they were.
So my name is John Mokel and I live in Shakopee and we'd like to thank Steve Lilahog and all the staff at Public Works for the great tour they gave. And we felt that it was important to really tell council what a great job they did because Steve's, uh, staff went above and beyond in what I feel was, uh, appropriate for a tour. He had all his staff there, or I shouldn't say all, but he had, um, Mike was there, Bill was there, Dave was there, and Kristen to give us, or Christine to give us a tour. And that, we just want to really thank Steve and his staff and also the council for allowing us to have that kind of a tour. So, that's all, all we have.
Thank you. Councilor Lewis?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the scouts, did you get a chance to climb in any of the vehicles?
Yes.
That's good.
Yeah, tell, tell Councilor Lewis which vehicles you climbed in.
We climbed into the, um, the snowplow and I don't think we climbed into any one, any other ones, if I'm blanking.
Remember any of the other things?
No, I think we just...
Come forward.
Speak into the microphone, please, yeah?
Probably, I think it was the snow blower also.
Councilor, uh, Whiting?
Am I to understand you took a tour of the sewer system? Oh, okay. Oh, okay, exactly. Well, I'm glad you enjoyed the tour.
Very nice. Thanks scouts and thanks city staff for allowing that to happen. That's great. Uh, recognize any citizen that would like to come forward again and speak on an item not on the agenda? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record and welcome. Seeing none, we will move forward then to item number six. Items removed from consent, and I believe 4A1. Uh, Councilor Whiting?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I have no doubt that the North Star Search and Rescue is a great operation. We've had this in front of the council before and we talked about, um, keeping some of these, uh, things a little more local, these fundraising, uh, legal gambling opportunities. Uh, I know there's been local establishments, uh, and local, um, service groups that have, uh, been interested and tried to get this, this facility to do their, uh, their legal gambling. So, um, I, I still have concerns about this. I mean, um, I'd like to see these for local fundraising events.
Councilor Lewis?
I agree with, uh, Councilor Whiting that I'd like to see it stay local, but this is somewhat local. I mean, they are free to, for our police department to use. If the need ever arises, they will come out and there's no charge. So, you know, it's semi-local, I'll put it that way. So, at this point, you know, we've got the best of what we've been able to get out there. I don't know what the hangup is with the Muddy Cow and the rest of the, uh, groups in town that they can't get together, but, um, you know, this is the best one we've had come forward. So, I'm in favor of it. Um, I'd like to see a presentation. That's why I would have taken it off if you hadn't because I, I believe they deserve a chance to speak.
Is there a representative here? Would you like to come forwards?
You want two-legged or four-legged? You want a two-legged representative or a four-legged representative?
Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Ross Butterfield. I'm the deputy chief with North Star Search and Rescue. We're based in Golden Valley, Minnesota.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry. I'm the deputy chief of North Star Search and Rescue. We're based in Golden Valley, Minnesota. We were founded as a nonprofit 501(c)(3) in 1989. Uh, we provide nationally certified canines to assist law enforcement locate missing and lost people across Minnesota in the five-state area. Uh, we're a free resource. All of our members are either police officers, firefighters, sheriff deputies. We have a state trooper out of the Anoka area. Um, I come from an EMS background, so a lot of ambulance and emergency room for me. Um, again, we're nationally certified, uh, provide this service for free to your agencies. Uh, we work for local, city, state, and federal. So, we've been on calls for the FBI, the BCA, um, closest savage in Shakopee, uh, we've provided. So, this is, we don't receive any state or federal money for our search and rescue efforts. So, we do charitable gambling and donations from the general public is what keeps our unit afloat. Uh, we're the only licensed agency in the state of Minnesota that does search and rescue by the state of Minnesota. We're licensed as a medical response unit. So, we're licensed just like your fire department to respond to emergencies. So...
Question, Councilor Whiting?
Yeah, thank you. Did, did you say you don't work for the local, local, uh, police and fire or you do?
We do. We, local, we only come out if police or fire call us out, or whoever has command over the incident. So, that could be the BCA, the FBI, your sheriff's department, your police department, and we work under their direction.
Okay. Other questions? Councilor Lewis?
Could you tell us all the different things that the dog is trained in?
Absolutely. So, this is Lichen. How old is Lichen? Again, I forget. Seven months old. Uh, usually takes about a year and a half to two years to get these dogs nationally certified. They are certified, uh, at several different national levels, the same levels that your local police canines are certified at. Your police dogs are certified as patrol class and these dogs are utility class. Lichen will be a scent-specific tracking canine. And what that means is the difference is the ones that you see in your patrol cars, I think your sheriff's department has a canine, if I'm not mistaken.
Who, I believe.
A couple of them. Uh, those are patrol canines. They're trained in, uh, basic tracking. Uh, it's two hours or less, two miles or less. They get to a scene, set up a perimeter, looking, they're looking for a thing called endocrine sweat. It's a fear scent people give off when they're running afraid and they're looking for ground disturbance. Not that that dog wouldn't track further than two miles or two hours. It's just that's what they constantly train into that dog. Our dogs, my canine, uh, his longest track is for the Minnetonka Police Department. Had a guy leave a suicide note. We tracked him three days missing when they found his vehicle and we were able to track him, uh, a mile in 16 minutes on a three-day-old track and find him. Our dogs are scent-specific, so I could go through a football stadium and find a specific person. That's the difference between our track and what patrol track does. Uh, we have cadaver dogs for land and water. Over the last two weeks, we've had seven calls to Minnesota and Wisconsin, uh, for missing people. Uh, our last one was on Lake Pepin on Monday for a guy that, uh, seen on video coming by the marina on his sailboat. Sailboat circles a few more times and he's no longer on the boat. So, our dogs are trained in water and land cadaver disaster. Uh, one of our more notable searches is the St. Paul landslide at Lilydale Park where the two kids were killed. Uh, our chief's dog is a cadaver dog. She found the last little boy under four feet of mud. So, these dogs add a valuable resource to the community. And I was talking to your chief and, you know, we would respond down here 24 hours a day to help look for missing people. Our main, uh, call-out is usually Alzheimer's or dementia, uh, little kids that go missing or suicidal people. And a lot of that is urban tracking for us. The rest is cadaver for. And we have area dogs, disaster dogs. Uh, if a tornado rolls through, you know, we have a lot of impact on being able to identify in those rubble piles where the live people are first. And then we come in with cadaver dogs three days later and we'd be able to tell you where the dead people are. Um, we just signed a mutual aid agreement with the Three Rivers Park Police. Uh, they have 26 parks, as you know. You have one right here in your city. And we will respond with them to any 911 calls, uh, for missing people throughout the Three Rivers Park system. So, we also have an agreement with the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension where anytime when somebody goes missing in the state, we also get notified immediately that there's someone missing and we get referred as the primary search and rescue team in the state for any law enforcement agency that calls. So...
Councilor Whiting?
How many gambling locations do you serve now?
Um, we have, we had a couple and then we got rid of them because they weren't doing very well. Um, we have, uh, the Bingo Hall in Bloomington, which we're in the process now of closing because bingo was a break-even kind of proposition and that wasn't doing very well for us. And we have another one in Golden Valley. Right now, we have, uh, New Bohemia in Golden Valley where we have a pull tab booth.
So, what, uh, with, is there a representative from the Muddy Cow here today?
Don't believe they're here.
Okay, so what, uh, operations do you be running out there that you're aware of?
Um, they're asking us to do, uh, bar bingo and pull tabs out there. So, and they're gonna run it as a bar operation where the bartenders run it and then they just report it to us and we bring the games to them.
Okay, and you have a gambling board?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, Councilor Whiting?
You know, I, I, I agree that they, they would do great work. Uh, I just, I have to say that I think it, it should be local and, um, we're gonna have to stick with that.
Uh, Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I'm gonna expand out just a little broader. Over the years, we have kept it local where the dollars that are flowing into these, uh, pull tabs or gambling tend to be for community-oriented events or functions. And my concern is, once you start going outside, eventually you've got a big chunk of your local dollars going elsewhere. And, and I'm not sure that I, I wanna be a part of causing that to happen. Um, nothing against the organization. I think they, what they do is wonderful, absolutely great service. Um, but I'm not sure that Shakopee dollars going to Golden Valley or whatever, uh, even if it was somebody else from outside putting something together for Anoka Hockey or something. Um, you know, I think our businesses that take into this kind of endeavor should be supporting our, you know, youth activities and, and community functions. Likewise, I think if, if Anoka Hockey needs to raise money, they should try to look to Anoka to do that. And so, I think it breaks away from community and, and that's my caution. So...
Right. Councilor Lewis?
I agree somewhat with, uh, you know, we've had the other, another city's youth hockey come to Muddy Cow and wanted to get a license or be allowed. And I agree with Councilor Lehman and Councilor Whiting that, you know, that's, that's not what we're here for. They, that money needs to stay in town. Um, this, uh, this group here, they're a nonprofit and they do fantastic work. And like they said, they're 24/7. If we ever need them, they'll be here. So, basically, a lot of that money's gonna stay here if we ever need it. I, I would like to know what something like that would cost if we had to pay for it. I know canines, like the county, I know it's one reason we don't have a canine is the expense. So, the expense, just to get a dog certified, I was talking to the gentleman earlier out there, is over $4,000, just in the dog and all the time and training and everything else. So, they, they put a lot of money into that. So...
Councilor Mokel?
I think this is a difficult decision because we all agree that search and rescue is important. But I, I think this is where I agree with Councilor Lehman is we take that step outside the box and do we ever get a chance to come back? Because, you know, we could do this and say, oh, well, you know, we'll grant it for a year, whatever the contract is, and then it may never come back to Shakopee. If we never use their services, then how is that money, if, um, helping us? And that's what, I, where I find the hard part is if we step outside even once, then are we gonna ever be able to come back?
Councilor Whiting?
Uh, Mr. Thompson, could you weigh in on this if we have any legal issues?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I was making eye contact with the city clerk there because I haven't, you know, get access to the code, but we do have code. The money doesn't, I'll defer to Ms. Henson and she can explain what the code requires with respect to the expense, um, spent, the expenditure of the funds that are generated by local gambling.
So, Mayor and council, um, our city code, um, actually says that each licensed organization conducting gambling within our community needs to expend 75% of its expenditures within the trade city. So, 75% of their business would have to be spent here in this community. So, it's not that we're not receiving any benefit from having an outside nonprofit organization, um, doing gambling within our community. We are still reaping some benefit to that.
And that's in our ordinance, right?
Yes, it is in ordinance.
I think what this, I understand the slippery slope of it all too, but I believe the Muddy Cow's been open and organizations try to, nonprofits try to come to those places and the competition's actually pretty sharp for some of those places. Even places that don't do well, nonprofits actually drop, uh, certain locations, actually. And also the nonprofit organizations locally are actually not, all of them would have to commit time and resources, uh, to, uh, staff and, and play and monitor these games and, and, uh, et cetera. So, I see where the conversation, I understand that, but I think our code actually helps and protects our city. But since this became before us the last time, months ago, um, unfortunately, and I don't know any of the details, but a local organization was not able to come with terms with the establishment, um, I do look at this as a nonprofit that will serve our community and actually be required to serve our community in, in a percentage of dollars.
Yeah, I'd like some clarification. So, they would be, the North Star group would have to pay, uh, 75% of their profits would have to go back to Shakopee?
Yeah. Um, city code, um, mayor and council, city code 100, 130.66 subdivision B says lawful purposes. Each licensed organization conducting lawful gambling within the city shall expend 75% of its expenditures for lawful purposes on lawful purposes conducted or located within the city's trade area. So, they need to spend 75% within our trade area. Is that correct, Mayor?
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct, but by state law, trade area does not mean just the city. It means the city and, and I'm doing this from recollection, contiguous cities. Uh, so the state law prohibits cities from specifically saying, uh, that 75% gets spent in your city, but you can restrict it to being spent within the trade area, which is defined as Shakopee and contiguous cities.
Fire, Lichen, Savage, and Shasta.
Right, so it's in the area.
We're following the state parameters that are given under this statute.
State law doesn't mandate that, but it allows cities to do it and you've taken that step for this, to cover a situation like this where an, an outside organization applies for the license, but you can still require them that the proceeds from the gambling operation be spent in the trade area.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilor Lewis?
I guess I'd like to ask the representative from the group if they're able to do that, the 75%, if they are.
In the trade area?
Hi. Uh, one of the things we did when we had the Bingo Hall in Bloomington and we just literally closed that a week ago, uh, just because bingo is a break-even proposition, um, is we just gave $7,500 to the Bloomington trade area. So, we gave, uh, $3,000 to the city of Bloomington, uh, their police explorer program. And that was just in the last month here. We gave $2,500 to the city of, uh, Richfield Police Explorer Program. We give $1,000 to Eden Prairie and Edina Police Explorer Program. And the city of Savage received, uh, $1,000 for their crime prevention fund. So, that's how we kind of allocate it. Obviously, each city would like the biggest purse and that's why we gave Bloomington $3,000 because we were in their city. So...
Thank you.
But we would have no problem in, you know, every month, uh, your clerk will get a copy of exactly how much money was made and turned into the state. Um, and she'll know what the 75% is that we have to give for that. So...
Councilor Lewis, or Mr. Thompson, have a question?
Um, Mr. Mayor, members, one more thing. Keep in mind here that the license actually comes from the state. What, what's going on here is they want localities, local governments to approve the location, the premises. So, really the focus of the city's regulation is there's something about the premises that cause concerns about gambling operations. So, that's really what the scope of our review is. It isn't the overall licensing itself. That's not at the state level.
Councilor La, or, Councilor Lewis?
Um, yeah, I, I think this is a win-win in a way because, I mean, they've, they mandated to put 75% back in to the local economy, which, yeah, it's not just Shakopee, but, you know, a good chunk of it's gonna come to Shakopee and there's gonna be, nothing has to be done by any of our groups. And to Councilor Mokel's, uh, comment, um, I don't remember the exact comment, but this is insurance in my book. You know, we're, we're giving them the ability to provide us a service that's ensuring that they will be here when they're needed. And when you're looking for an Alzheimer patient, it's invaluable what those dogs can do. I mean, it's life or death.
Regardless of whether you guys approve us or not, we will always come to your city and help, but, you know, that's not our point. Our job is to come here and help. So...
Councilor Mokel?
I don't think this is about what they will or won't do for our community. I think what, what we're trying to get across is, is what is that, where, and this is maybe where I'm, I'm struggling is we gave the Muddy Cow the opportunity to look for somebody within the city, but they have not come to us and told us what they've done to try to find somebody here. And I think that's where I'm struggling with this is as, as a business, where are they to answer our questions about what they have looked for and what they haven't? And this is nothing against what North Star does or brings to the table.
Um, Councilor Lehman?
My question is, typically there's an agreement between the nonprofit and the establishment. And that agreement, you know, let's say it's 50/50 or something on whatever the, the proceeds are. And that agreement, you know, let's say it's 50/50 or something on whatever the, the proceeds are. The 75% then comes out of the 50% of the... Actually, if I... Groups' money, not establishment.
If I may, explain the state law there. Uh, the Muddy Cow, any business that does charitable gambling, the business itself is only allowed to get 10% or $1,750 a month maximum, whichever is greater. So it's never 50%.
Okay.
They get 10% maximum.
And that's...
That's a state law.
That's okay, alright.
Um, any other questions of North Star, otherwise we'll try to, uh, hold it here to council?
I have no more questions for him.
Uh, okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your consideration, you guys.
We get a motion on the table? Uh, Councillor Whiting?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you know, I, I would like to ask the questions of, of the Muddy Cow management, I think. And so, uh, I would offer to table this resolution until we can talk to them. That's my motion.
I have a motion on the table?
I'll second it.
And a second? For to have, uh, ask, uh, the establishment some further questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Lewis?
Table is no discussion, correct?
That's correct.
On a table?
Yes.
That's correct. Motion on a table?
Motion on a table is not discussable.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, motion on the table for, to table, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Moving ahead then to other items removed from consent. Uh, 4A3 resignation and separation agreement, Park and Rec Director and, uh, Councillor Lewis?
Yeah, I wanted to remove this, um, I think Ms. Polly deserves her due on this. And I think she was very qualified. I do think we are going to miss having her around. I wish her well. And, you know, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that, uh, this was her decision, not ours. And, you know, she's, she did a very good job for us and hopefully, where she goes, she can do a great job too.
Thank you for your service to our community, and Councillor Whiting?
I'll echo Mr. Lewis's comments and offer to accept the resignation of Director of Park and Recreation Jamie Polly effective April 20th, 2018. Approve the separation agreement and authorize appropriate city officials to execute.
I have a motion and a second by Councillor Lehman. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Um, next up is 4E4, 2018, uh, by two minutes overlay. Uh, the Community Center back parking lot, uh, Councillor Lewis?
Yeah, I don't know how many of you, uh, took a drive up to the Community Center and took a look at the back parking lot. I know it's not a huge amount of money, I believe it's $55,000 or $60,000 for the overlay back there. But, uh, I guess my question would be, what would a seal coat cost? And what would the, that extend the life expectancy of that piece of asphalt? Because to me, it doesn't look like it needs to be overlaid. It looks to me that it could be done a little cheaper. I guess, uh, Mr. Lilly, I'll could answer those questions.
Steve, you wanna make a comment on this?
Uh, Mayor and Council members, um, I don't have the price for, a comparison price for chip seal coating at hand here, but, um, I guess I would recommend that we, we can look at that. Uh, if the council is, certainly it's an option. Part of, part of what I think staff's plan was in the, including this in the CIP, was also aesthetics to make that parking lot. It's been piecemealed together to make it, make it look as, as one. Um, but certainly, we can look at other options there if, um, if, if the, at the councils' will. Um, and I would recommend, I guess, at this point, um, that we could, uh, it's a, it's a minor part of the overall contract. Um, I'd recommend that we could award it and, uh, and with the latitude that the city could work with a contractor and looking at options and we can bring them options back to you if you desire.
Uh, Councillor Lehman?
Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion to accept resolution R218-059, awarding the contracting amount of $1,274,644.83 to Neil and Sons for the 2018 by two minutes overlay project CIF 18-002, the Community Center back parking lot overlay project PA 18-013. And I'll speak to it if there's a second.
Okay.
Sorry.
Uh, Councillor Whiting, a second?
Mayor?
And discussion, Councillor Lehman?
The reason I'm gonna support replacing that parking lot is, there's a couple of reasons. Granted, I'm not one to like to spend money, I think that's pretty obvious. But we, we're in a position where, against half the community's wishes, we built the community center. A pretty state-of-the-art, up-to-date community center.
Absolutely.
And the, the front parking lot, I believe, was been updated with that construction. And if we're gonna, if we're gonna chip seal or, or seal coat and put a Band-Aid on this and try to convince people that we've just raised the rates for this state-of-the-art facility, but you can park in the mud out back, uh, I have a problem with that, okay? Which sends the wrong message. I also think it makes sense from, from a budgeting standpoint to know what you have to work with moving into the future. If you replace this parking lot in the back, you know what the life expectancy is. You can program in your future chip seal and your actual replacement at a future date. You're not able to do that if you're gonna just keep Band-Aiding it because you really don't know when the failure's gonna happen. And then you're out of sequence with your dollars. So I think since there's other larger, uh, projects included in this, I, I'm confident that we're gonna get decent pricing because they're in the neighborhood with the same equipment. That makes, uh, efficiency sense to me. So I think there's a lot of benefits, uh, to do this all at the same time. And that's why I'm gonna support it.
Councillor Lewis?
Part, I would say half of that parking lot was done new with the Community Center rebuilt. The back parking lot is part, good chunk of it is new. And I'll agree with you that it makes sense the way you're explaining it. That's why I said, it's not a huge amount of money, you know, but I just wanted to check with everybody and see what the options were. So I, I will support what you're saying. It makes sense that everything looks as new as possible.
I think, uh, you know, from a timing aspect, get it on the same cycle even, uh, for that development. Then, you know, 20, 30 years down the line, you do it again, it's all in one. And I don't remember as this part of it. I know we talked about, it was a discussion about the back parking lot. Um, but I always felt, do the first one for, do the front one first, then come back and do the second one. But, uh, Councillor Lewis?
And I'm guessing, uh, Mr. Lilly-Hogg, when he'd come back, the, there wouldn't be a significant difference between a chip seal and the overlay, so.
Uh, Councillor Lehman?
Mayor, I'm not high into aesthetics, that's really not my deal. I'm over function, over fashion. But the reason I'm supporting this is, is exactly what you said. It's much easier to program knowing what you have moving into the future. I'm, I'm sure engineering department's gonna be able to look at a new parking lot and say, okay, in the program, in, you know, two years, we're gonna do seal coat, in five years, we're gonna chip seal and, you know, and, and they've got a programmed, uh, pavement preservation process already in place that they will apply to that. And they know exactly what it's gonna be probably for the next 20 years, that's gonna go into that, uh, maintenance-wise. But I also think, excuse me, I also think, like I said, that we've got a much larger project with the same equipment and by two minutes and stuff. And, and if you take into consideration what you're gonna save on mobilization cost and bulk pricing, um, and what it would cost in staff time to go back and put together estimates and all this stuff, I don't know what he gets, probably a million dollars an hour over there for high talent like him. But, uh, you know, you start piecing all these things together and you're really talking about probably maybe a $10,000 difference here. And it's just, at some point, it's just not worth the hassle.
Alright, Councillor Whiting?
I just wanna encourage folks to understand that we do have a back parking lot at the Community Center. If you're trying to find parking, remember, there's a back parking lot. You have to walk around, but, uh, I just wanna point that out, so.
Motion on the table, and a second?
No, I'm trying.
Uh, more discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Moving ahead, 4E5, Veerling Drive Phase 2 Project, Councillor Lehman?
Mayor, I took this one off consent. This one here is, uh, a million dollars over the original estimate. When we saw the presentation, I said then that there's a lot of fluff in this. I, I believe the pavers and all the other, fluff, I call it. I'm into function, not fashion. I, I don't agree with that, that that's the best use of taxpayer money. Um, I compare it to Shakopee Avenue's reconstruction project. These are the same, pretty much the same cost. Um, Shakopee Avenue's longer, it's a reconstruction, which costs a lot more than a new because you're taking out all the infrastructure and putting it back in the ground. And this really shows how much, above and beyond what normal city streets would be. And we've gotta recognize, we have those benefiting from it paying zero. So I just, I totally disagree, uh, you know, this council at one time had a position that we weren't putting infrastructure in for future development and this is exactly what we're doing. And therefore, I'm not supporting it, so I wanted it off so I could vote against it.
Uh, Councillor Lewis?
Well, and I thought the last time that this came forward that, uh, we were gonna get some, uh, costs involved with the, the different plantings and the, the roundabout and the pavers and, you know, what the cost savings were gonna be for certain things. And I don't see any of that. I mean, and for that reason, I'd like to see this tabled.
Um, Councillor Whiting?
Uh, my comments on there is the, the difference is, is that we're trying to sell these, we're marketing these, uh, parcels, not all of them. But there's several up there that we have that we're moving along and to entice that, uh, best and highest use for our tax base. I think, uh, we, we had the presentation on this and I, I understood where it was coming from, so.
I look at it even a bigger picture than that. Um, Veerling Drive that extends all the way from 69, all the way to, um, you know, Eagle Creek. The, we fought really hard as a community to get access for 69 and also fought hard not to have lengthy, uh, uh, service roads to get there. I saw several plans where the service roads were gonna be, you know, south of town to actually, you had to make a decision way south of town to get on the service road to be able to access 69, which is a benefit to our community, benefit to our town. This area's gonna come back to life and will have economic value, also transportation value, and help reinvigorate our, our west end, which has been, uh, you know, uh, dying over the years. So, um, that's kinda my feel on it, and Councillor Lehman?
Just so everybody's clear, it wasn't a hard fight to get 69 and 169 connected. All we had to do is tell the state that they lied to us, which is the truth. They took out Davy's addition, kicked a bunch of people out of their houses, dislocated them and said, we're doing this because we're putting this connection in. And then they didn't do it. And guys like me called them out on it and said, you moved all these people, I'll put the damn road in. So it wasn't that difficult. The future maintenance cost of this improvement, and ongoing maintenance cost, is, is gonna be substantial, in my opinion, to the taxpayers in general. We're not doing these businesses that locate in this intersection a favor when this area gets re, re, reconed in 30 years. The recon on this type of fluffy roadway is gonna be substantially more than the average road. And it's gonna fall on them businesses unless, of course, somebody exempts them, uh, which wouldn't be fair to the rest of the taxpayers that pay assessments for road improvements. So I, uh, I, I, I don't agree with this.
Councillor Lewis?
Well, to Councillor Lehman's point about, uh, not paying for infrastructure, but, uh, you gotta remember, we own most of this property and at one time, we owned all of it. And I agree with you that infrastructure should fall on the landowner, which basically is falling on us. I still agree with you on the part of the fluff. I think there's a couple tons of fluff in this thing. And, uh, like you say, the maintenance costs and the upkeep, to keep this looking the way it's gonna be put in as, we're probably gonna have to hire half a person on the street department just to maintain this area. And, uh, for that reason, I, I can agree with it. That and the fact that we didn't see any cost comparisons.
Steve, you had a comment?
Um, yes, Mayor and Council members, apologies for not providing cost comparisons at this point. Um, I, I misunderstood. Um, it's actually, I, I have it queued up to do, not just for this project, but overall streetscaping, um, throughout the community. Um, this is relatively a small project when we look at the miles of city streets, um, in the city. Um, other street skating area, streetscaping areas in the city. Um, I, I can give you a from-the-hip estimate on it, um, based on, um, some very relative experience for streetscaping of this nature and what it takes to maintain. Um, this is, uh, just under a mile section roadway, closer to a half mile. Um, and I would estimate that it would take, um, for, for general maintenance, now I'm talking just above and beyond of, of what the plannings would take and the trees on an annual basis. You know, there's other street, streetscaping components to it, such as street lighting, but that would generally be required anyways. Um, so for the plannings and trees, it's, it's estimated that it'd be about $5,000 annually for this area. Um, so it, it's, it's a meager amount compared to the overall budget of, of streets and parks. And, uh, we are looking at other, um, at our organization as a whole to, uh, to look at the streetscapings that we've done, um, such as downtown, um, some of the components along, uh, County Highway 101 and those other elements that we're responsible for in the cities to make sure that we have a good inventory of it and a, a good plan going forward. Um, but this, this project, as far as the plannings go, um, it, it's, um, it, it adds to our workload, no doubt about it, but it's, it's nothing that we can't absorb for this project. Um, when I say that, I say that, um, also with the caveat that we can't continue to absorb it, expanding it. But this one project, um, won't necessarily break, uh, the back of, of public works to maintain this. So, um, I offer that for your consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Mokel?
Well, what I'm gonna say is, you know, we knew that this road was temporary when it was put in and that was, um, done. And the uproar when the, the county almost allowed this to be torn down was tremendous. And, and residents need this roadway, this connection. And so we've kinda keep talking back and forth, but in reality is, is it's not gonna go away or get cheaper. So, um, with that, I, I offer a motion to adopt resolution R2018-060, awarding a contract in the amount of $1,759,901.32 to Eureka Construction Inc. for the Veerling Drive Phase 2 Project CIF 18-007.
Uh, Councillor Whiting?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Councillor Lehman?
Did I hear our engineer correctly? We're gonna spend an extra million dollars on a project so that we can spend an extra 500, or $5,000 a year? Only in government would you get that.
Steve?
Uh, Mayor and Council members, I absolutely did not say that. Um, the, I, I, I'm not sure that I even inclined anything like that, but, um, I would say, looking back at, um, what we talked about at the last meeting when we ordered the plans, or when we, when the city council approved the plans and, and, um, ordered the solicitation of bids, um, that we discussed that the additional cost came from out of scope items that were added to the project. That included, uh, the streetscaping to the medians and, and addition of the roundabout, as well as adding the stormwater improvements that were needed for the adjacent EDA parcels. Um, so that's what we specifically talked about is, is why the project cost was increased compared to what was in the actual capital improvement plan.
Councillor Lewis?
Yeah, I didn't hear Steve say anything about spending an extra million dollars. He just mentioned the 5,000 that it was gonna cost to maintain it per year, which isn't a ton of money. Um, and I'm gonna offset that with the fact that I noticed today that, uh, one of the catch basins down by the VFW, um, his staff is rebuilding it, which to me is a huge savings to our city because if we had to farm that out, I'm sure the price would be considerably higher.
Okay, uh, further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I'm clear with Councillor Mokel. I'm not a, I'm in favor of having a road here. I'm not in favor of building the Taj Mahal Road. I don't, the only thing missing is inlays, diamonds and some, some gold leaf in this project.
There's a lot of infrastructure that needed to, that needed... There's a lot of infrastructure that needs to go into this, actually, and for the benefit of those adjacent property owners, of which we are. And the actual transportation aspect of it, you know, this is an important roadway. It may not look like one now. But I assure, if we build this, people will use it very heavily. Counselor Lewis?
I agree with you. People are going to use it. I'm sure they're chomping at the bit to use it now because it's been closed off all winter. I mean, you know, wait till it's finished, it'll be, you know, I'd like to see some traffic counts up there. But I agree with Counselor Lehman. We're building a Taj Mahal for an area that hasn't done anything. And do we want to spend that much in the process to hope that it goes somewhere? And I guess I could meet you halfway, but for the reason of a little too much being spent, I have to vote no on this.
That's fine. Okay, discussion. Motion on the table in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. Thank you. Moving ahead then to public hearings. 7A, public hearing on the amendment of an original EDA authority resolution to incorporate HRA properties into the EDA. And Counselor Whiting?
I'd like a motion to open a public hearing.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. A public hearing is open. Michael, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. These are some updates and corrections to the current EDA requirements that we have. It was found that there are actually three properties in the city, so as part of this, there will be two quick claim deeds executed to transfer that property over the, from the HRA to the EDA. This is the first property. This is at Fourth and Minnesota. It's actually the end of an alley, currently being held by the HRA. No one on staff could explain to me why, but we need to get that out of the HRA's name. This is a piece of the library parking lot that's currently in the HRA's name. And then lastly, this is Scott Street and Levy Drive, another parcel that's currently in the HRA's name.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Being a lifelong resident of Shakpee, I can tell you why part of that library parking lot belongs to the city. That used to be the city sweeping dump, along with where they banked their sand for winter.
Very good. You've scoured the records for property that is in HRA name, or will we see others, or is this, does this look like our complete list?
Mayor and Council, we believe this is the complete list. We worked with the city attorney and their staff to get this cleaned up.
In that alley section, would that be something that we would even consider a vacation if it serves no city purpose, outside of maybe an easement?
Mayor and Council, what we would do is transfer that over to the EDA through this, and then we can have a discussion with the Public Works Department and see whether it needs to be in the city's name.
Counselor Lewis?
Can you go to the next slide there? Yeah. The building that's in the top left corner there with the green roof? Okay, that one. Once upon a time, the city owned about half of that parking lot. I used to work for the gentleman that owned the bigger building, and I believe an agreement was put together that he was going to be able to use that parking lot if he maintained it. Now, I just want to make sure that in your search, that that was double-checked, because I don't know that that was ever sold outright.
Used what parking lot?
Used the parking lot where this back part here.
In the back of that green building?
Yeah.
Mayor and Council, again, this is parcels owned by the HRA. There may be other EDA property owned, but what we're trying to do is clean up the HRA properties and turn them over to the EDA.
Get it all under one umbrella. That's the general, what we're trying to do here. Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? If not, thank you, Michael. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and make comment in regard to this agenda item? This is a public hearing. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Counselor Lehman?
Motion, close of public hearing.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Mokel. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. Counselor Whiting?
I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution Number R. 2018-066, amending Resolution Number 4206 as amended regarding the creation of the Economic Development Authority.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Mokel. Further discussion? Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, is it possible that we could put slides of that, of these properties in with this packet of information so that's clear? The descriptions in this resolution are, I'm sure nobody can read it and know where that is.
We can have exhibits. Michael?
We can add in the property sheets. We didn't have addresses on them because these are all.
Legal descriptions.
Right, but I read the legal descriptions and then I emailed to say, "Where are these properties?" because of.
So we will put the county property cards attached to this.
Motion on the table in a second. Further discussion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving ahead, 8A1, monthly financial review, April 2018. Darren, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Council. Hang on one second here. Can you read that all right? It looks, we'll make it a little bigger here. All right. We haven't been discussing the financial report for, I think we missed last month or whatever, we got moved to consent. So back here before you had to review the April financial report. And I'm happy to say, one-third of the way through the year, we are looking, our general fund is looking really well at this point in time. If you look at our revenues, it does say that we're at 13% of the budget, but as we've talked about over many times, that our taxes come in twice a year, and those really skew the total revenue amounts at this point in time. So if we were to take the taxes line out and the special assessments, which is a small amount anyway, if we took that out, our revenues would be sitting at about 37% at this point in time. So we're right above that kind of 33% mark that we're looking for at this point in time. Looking at a couple of other of the red arrows that are going to indicate that they're a little below the target at this point is the intergovernmental revenue. That again is, those revenues come in sporadically. We get some at the beginning of the year, then we get some later after the state's fiscal year closes. After June 30th, we'll get some more at that point in time. Our police and fire state aid coming in October timeframe, I believe it is. And so these are right in line with where they should be. If you look at last year's amount at this point in time, the intergovernmental revenue is about $50,000 less than it was last year at this point. And that's really due to the shift in our municipal state aid dollars. We had a shift from maintenance dollars, which are recognized in our general fund, to construction dollars, which are recognized in our capital improvement fund. And we accounted for that when we did the 2018 budget. We knew that shift was coming, and so we accounted for that in preparation of that shift. So no worries at that point in time. The one other item with the green arrow is the miscellaneous revenue, and that's really interest revenue. We've really seen interest rates now this year have really started to go upward, and we're seeing some pretty good returns and such like that as well, too. So that's a positive on that end of it. One other item that I should note that I didn't point out in my memo is the charges for services. It's right in that 41% range, so it's within that 10% margin at this point. But looking at last year compared to this year, it's about $600,000 or $700,000 more than it was last year. And a lot of that is due to the community center ice arena recreation revenue associated with the ice arena. So a lot of charges for services, memberships, programming, those types of things that are in there. We also have our payment from Shakpee Public Utilities goes into that line item as well, too, and that's increased a little bit with increased sales on their end as well. So overall, revenues are looking really good. Moving down to expenditures.
Questions on the revenue side? If not, continue. Yep.
Here again, expenditures are really looking really good. We're at 29%, so we're below that 33% mark at this point. Couple of the arrows that we want to point out, and really, we've pointed out the mayor and council one each month, and that's really due to the front-loading of expenditures for that division. It's a small dollar amount division. But again, a lot of your expenditures are at the beginning part of the year, and as the year progresses, that variance then falls back in line. Couple of the green arrows. We have finance department is at 17%. I'd like to take credit for that as astute management on that end of it. But as soon as we pay the assessing bill to Scott County for our assessments, my arrow will be red, so I won't take any credit this month because I don't want to take any credit next month, so. Natural resources, that's at 4%. Those activities, now that summer's approaching, will, those activities start picking up again with our tree management service contracts and such like that as well, too. So overall, general fund is looking really well. So if there's any questions on the expenditures, we can, before we move on to the community center.
Before we go, I just have a couple of questions on the first couple pages. So we've seen this before on the advertising dollars that are booked in '16 with the money, and it looks like it's a wash.
You're talking about the next page on the community center, or the ice arena revenues. Is that what you're talking about? Yep. Let me get over, let me open that up. All right, so if you look at your ice arena revenues, last year at this point in time was $254,000. This year, it's $271,000. So you think you're trending in the right direction there, and we are. Just know that that number from last year, that $254,000, we had a small amount, and it was only literally a few thousand dollars. I think it was $4,000 or $5,000 of that nature. That is revenue sharing with the hockey association for advertising revenue. And this relates back to 2016. So we got revenue in from the advertising company that was recognized in 2016 as a receivable. We got it in in January of 2017. So we recognized that as a receivable, but we did not recognize that the hockey association is due a certain percentage of that. If it's, I don't recall what the percentage is, but say it's 25%. They were due, you know, $4,000, $5,000, $6,000, or whatever that amount was. We didn't pick that up as a payable. And so that reduced our revenue in 2017. So we, excuse me, we understated our revenue in 2016, overstated our revenue in 2017 by this small amount, and then it washes out. So in reality, those numbers would be a little bit closer if we didn't have that minor adjustment back in 2016, 2017. If you look at the expenditures of the ice arena, it's remarkable that it's within like $200, $300 compared last year to this year. So that's, that's pretty phenomenal on that end of it. It'll be interesting to see now. We had turf in there for a little while this spring. I know sales were pretty high on that.
Net positive.
As Nate has mentioned, it was a net positive. And I know just briefly glanced at some of the utility bills. I think we saw a pretty decent decrease in utility bills there as well, too, for that, you know, short window as well. So it probably have a little positive effect on the bottom line, so. Community center revenues, they are trending in the right direction as well. I believe we're at, we're at, the community center revenues are about 40% of the budget right now. So if we're taking 33% as that target, we're above that at this point. Obviously, Sand Venture will kick in here at the end of, end of May, first part of June, those revenues will start ramping up and probably even see that this month as season passes are beginning to be sold and such like that, so. And there again, the expenditures are within line as well, too, with the budget. So there isn't anything that's abnormal at this point in time. Obviously, that'll be seasonality with it as well, too, as Sand Venture picks up, summer program picks up, we'll have an uptick in expenditures at that point for personnel and seasonal staff and such like that, so.
Questions? Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, just so we don't see a downtick in the indoor pool.
Right, and it's going to be difficult because I, when did the pool open in about first part of July last year and such like that? So it'll be hard to see what you see with the pool itself. You know, in the summertime, people like to get outside a little bit, but there's also rainy days in the summer, so.
Right, they just like the sun.
So, right. You kind of want rain on the one side, and the other side, you don't want rain, so.
Second question?
Yeah, go ahead.
As far as the advertising, has all the advertising been sold, do you know?
You know, I don't know. I don't, Nate, maybe Nate can answer that?
I know we were waiting on the Zambonis.
To my understanding, we have one Zamboni sold, now on the other one, still waiting on a deal that's been cut, and we don't have a contract yet. So it's pretty much all sold.
Great. I'd go out and hear that.
I have a question on, so in the last couple of years, I've noticed, both in memberships and now I'm seeing it in the advertising dollars, that you may take in the money, but you amortize that over every month that you have that membership, right?
For the memberships, we amortize it. The annual memberships, we amortize.
And same so, if you did a big advertising deal that was spread over five or 10 years, and you took some payments over the first couple of years, you would, you'd book that as revenue on an ongoing basis every year, right?
Can we talk about that after our audit report is issued? No? Theoretically, yes, you would, you would want to recognize that over the life of that contract. That's a good point. I'll have to go back and kind of take a peek at some of that stuff and see if it's material, but.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, Nate, I'm just curious, who's got the one Zamboni? I won't ask you about the second because it's not a done deal.
That would be the Zambonian Arena Two.
Yeah, but who's?
And it's Minnesota Orthodontic Specialist.
Yeah, I suppose they'd have a valid interest in hockey, wouldn't they?
More questions for Darren? More questions for Darren?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If not, thank you. Moving ahead then to 8A2, Republic Service request for rate increase. Nate's going to put it out. Nate?
No, Mr. Mayor, I'd leave it. I have Matisse from Republic.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. It's a pleasure to be here.
Speak into the mic, please.
You got to speak louder. Thank you.
I will speak a little louder. How's that?
We get feedback from our people listening at home, so.
Oh, good to know. I definitely would like them to hear what I have to say. Again, thank you for the privilege of coming before you today to talk about our annual price adjustment for trash and recycling. The last time that I visited with you all to deliver the annual report, we talked about, I talked about some of the things that are affecting our industry. I'm going to give you a quick update, and then we'll get to the price adjustment. The China Sword, which I spoke of last time, has put a great amount of stress on the recycling industry and continues to do so. China no longer accepts mixed scrap paper and mixed plastics. They've reduced contamination percentage down to 0.5%, which I shared with you, and it's not getting better, folks. This has been a very challenging time. Last week, China suspended all imports of U.S. recycled materials until June 4th. Recycling costs continue to climb as we slow down our lines. And in some areas of the U.S., stockpiled recyclables are having to be landfilled. They're, when you stockpile paper and you have some bad weather, it spoils and it ends up in the landfill. We can't get it to end markets quickly enough. We are faring quite well yet in our immediate area. Immediate impacts in our industry include adjusted processing speeds so that we can get that quality down to that point, you know, that half a percent. As a result, some of our facilities aren't able to handle the material volume. We're adding human resources to our sort lines, picking that, making sure it is as clean as possible, also looking at making investments in our technology to keep, again, just to keep reducing that contamination level. Exploring, and we're also exploring investments in other areas. We're exploring other domestic and international markets, as is everybody else in our industry. So we continue to process mixed paper, old newsprint, and we're proactively really evaluating how we recycle. A big piece of that for me and for the communities here is education to our residents and to our businesses. Recently, I published an article with our communications group and did submit that to staff here that can be used. that can be used as either a news, you know, piece of newsletter or simply posted online. Again, clean, empty, dry. Let's try to clean up our recycling as best we can and, and keep recycling sustainable. So that is my latest update with recycling. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions on recycling? Counselor Whiting?
Just a comment, we had some of our high school kids in talking about our recycling. And can you remind me where we are as a city in our recycling efforts?
Recycling efforts instead of, in, in terms of participation rate?
Participation or how we rate with other communities or whatever kind of information?
Actually, Shakopee rates quite well against the other, the other communities. There's a strong present, participation rate of well over seventy percent. I don't have that exact number with me, but it was in the upper seventy percentile. So that was, that's very, very good for a community this size. There's a lot of enthusiasm around recycling. I know that with yours, your spring clean, your, your spring cleanup day, your participation is fantastic. And it continues to grow.
I waited in that line, yeah.
I mean, wow. I was amazed and we get really excited about that, that event. And kudos to staff. I don't, I don't know what you do to market that event, but again, it was, it, it's, it's impressive.
People are upset when they miss it.
Yes, I'm well aware of that, Counselor. And work very hard if, when those, those rare occasions happen, work real hard to get a driver out here same day to get them picked up. And also, you know, you do have some residents that have more than one recycling cart. They love to recycle and we want to encourage that. Another piece is just recently, as part of my audits that I've implemented for your city, one of the things that I do is go through our, our surveys. So I go into our NPS survey site and I'll read through each one independently. One of the things that I, I did see this week is I had two requests there or, or two surveys where one of the Shakopee's residents suggested weekly recycling. We would really like to see that. So what I will do is reach out to them, I'm going to look up to see what their service level is at this time. If they don't have the largest cart available, then I will offer them a second one at no cost. So I was really excited to see that and to see two within, you know, within the same quarter was, again, impressive. You have a strong interest here in your community and a lot of great participation.
Great. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, as far as the cleanup day, I think we have a lot of people that schedule their garage cleaning around that time. Yeah, it's always been very popular. Good way to get into spring and clean your garage out and get it ready for summer.
And you know, just the behavior of the folks waiting in lines, you know, I mean, that's a pretty good sized line that you've got. People were really patient, they were happy. We, I got wonderful feedback from our operations team.
The reason they're happy is the line moves faster now than it used to. Considerably faster.
They've got it down to a science, yeah.
Right, the, oops, excuse me, no, go ahead, I'll.
Can we move on to the rate portion of your presentation?
Yes, sir. In terms of rate, you will find in your packet the backup data. And what, what I would like to propose this evening to all of you is that we price adjust and increase standard collection price, that is your trash pickup, fifteen cents. The ever, the every other week trash collection on the thirty gallon, eleven cents. And then recycling, eight cents monthly. That is based on CPI.
It's straight on CPI, nothing to do with your business? Just the?
This is CPI. This is over, this has nothing to do with disposal, nothing to do with republic services specifically?
Tipping charges that, when, I know the last time your company was here last fall and wanted an increase due to the, I call it the tipping fees for a new location, is that correct?
That is correct. There is none of, I'm not asking for that. In fact, some of you, you may have read this, may have not, it's perfectly good time to bring this up. GRE, where your materials are being transloaded to from Demcon, did make an announcement very recently of closing their business potentially this year. They are looking at, oh, actually, it's, it's open to some of the counties to see if they want to purchase that facility. So if anything changes there, I will be back on your agenda.
Other questions, Counselor Lehman?
My question's off for staff, so I'll wait until the presentation's done.
Counselor Lewis, question?
Yeah, I've recently gotten a few complaints on your services. I'm just curious on what our percentages are running on complaints compared to a year ago.
Actually, they're down. When I reviewed our NPS score, let me get that. First quarter of those fourteen surveys, we had four unfavorable surveys. And those were around, two wanted weekly recycling, one had a concern about cart placement after a cart was tipped. It was being set near the neighbors, near that person's mailbox. Also another concerned on a hold time with customer service center. Those complaints have been reduced significantly. And then even this Thursday, I am meeting with the VP of Customer Experience. He is coming to Eden Prairie and I have some areas of opportunity for him to share, some of the things that staff has brought forward and then also from NPS. So we have seen a reduction in complaints. We do send monthly reports out to staff and so I'm sure those are available to you as well. If you would like, I can personally send those to you.
No, I just was, just wanted to get an update.
Okay, yeah.
I know that whenever someone has a complaint, it's the, you know, it's the biggest thing in their world, so.
And people get very passionate about their waste service, there's no doubt about it.
They're compassionate about every service, but.
Is that so? You would know that. And then also in quarter two, we've had ten surveys go out so far. Two of those have come back unfavorable. One had a concern about our customer resource center and some hold time. I investigated that the end of April. We had eighty new customer resource reps join the team and hit the floor. So along with some weather issues, the hold times were up. They are much better now, I've tested it myself calling in. The other unfavorable was that resident said that they would like to see some enhancements in our search feature on our website. He had a very common last name, didn't have his account number and tried to do a search and saw, oh, probably fifty names. And he said, is there any way that you can just dial that in a little bit better? And then we had ten favorable. And Counselor, he, those, those were around service in terms of, we heard prompt service. Customer service has been amazing service and, and our, our actual service is always on time. Very helpful and professional, good job. Those are the comments that, that I had so far. I will keep you updated on those.
Those are the comments we want to hear.
More to your presentation, or?
That's it, I want to keep it simple for you.
Other questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Lewis, you had a, a question of staff?
No, that was Counselor Lehman.
Oh, Counselor Lehman?
Couple of questions. First off, what, what's the, when's this contract up? Does anybody know?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Lehman, the contract is up at the end of May twenty nineteen.
Nineteen? Are we, according to our existing contract, are we required to approve this increase?
Counselor Lehman, I'd probably defer to the city attorney on that, we talked about that this morning.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Counsel, what the contract document says is that they're allowed to apply for a cost of living adjustment and it's for the council to consider. So it's not mandated, but it's implicit in the contract that they can't apply for it.
Okay.
It's contemplated in the contract, probably that's a better way to put it.
It's contemplated that they can, they can ask for it.
Right.
Okay, the, here's where I'm going to go with this. It wasn't but, very long ago, where'd you go? It wasn't very long ago at any rate that Republic was before us with increased charges. We passed that because it was a pass through as a, an additional cost that they had for the tipping fees. And shortly after that, we had this big issue with this billing, overbilling issue, which flared up and, and, cuts off my language, made some of our constituents less than happy. Which ended up taking quite a bit of staff time on our end, which there is a dollar value to that, to try to rectify. And, and now we're turning around and looking at another increase. And the representative is standing before us tonight telling us that it's very possible they'll be back shortly again. And it's like, you know, when you've got a contract coming up and you're going to bid in the open market, you probably want to have somewhat of a decent rapport with those that you are serving. And I, you know, it's just me, I could be wrong, but the complaints that I receive, I mean, it's good that your, your call complaints are lower, but the complaints that I'm getting from my constituents is they can't get through. Well, if they can't get through, they're probably not on record as being a call. They've given up and hung up. So we know there's work to be done on, on that end. And, and I'm just not in favor of every two months passing on increase after increase after increase. I mean, the whole process was supposed to be, the bidding process is to save people money, not cost them more money. And in this case, it's costing them on both sides. It's costing them on the Republic side, it's costing them on the city side with staff time to do Republic's job. So I'm not real comfortable right now. Actually, I'm a little bit frustrated on this, so.
Counselor Lewis?
I agree partially with Counselor Lehman. I'm just wondering if it would be legal for us just to cut the baby in half and give them half of what they want and we keep the other half for what staff time we've spent.
Other discussion points? Counselor Whiting?
You know, I, I don't like the idea of coming back all the time for rate increases either, nobody does. But the, the factor is, is that rates do go up, wages do go up. I get it, it's a little, you know, it's a three point two percent what we're looking for in an increase here. I understand, I don't like it, but I understand, so.
Counselor Mokel?
Well, I think that for me, I'm kind of in the same boat because I, I do feel it's almost like we just turned around and, and did a rate increase. And it wasn't the rate increase itself, it was having to deal with the fallout from not having that information there. And I think all of us will say our phones rang probably more than they have the entire time we've been on council. And it was just that trying to explain to people and then finding out on our end that we didn't even know everything that was going on. And, and then trying to call staff and fix, have them fix what we, or find what we were finding that wasn't what we said we passed and why things didn't work. And then it took us months to get to that point. And I think that's where I'm feeling, it's not about the rate increases, the timeframe for me because we've sat here and had to defend and talk about what happened and why it happened. And now we're back here and it, it doesn't feel like there's been that time, much time that's passed.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, you know, I, I try to be as fair as I can and, and, you know, I'll split the difference, I'll agree to that, but I still don't like it. So I'll make that motion.
You're going to make a motion?
I'm making a motion to go one point.
One point six.
Yeah, one point six, one point seven.
One point seven.
I'll second it.
And I have a motion and a second?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, can we clarify the numbers in the motion then?
Sure, one point seven percent C, or as the percent of CPI. Does that clarify it for you or you want me to break it down into the actual numbers?
I put the actual dollar, the actual cents in there.
Jim?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Counsel, quick math, there was three point two that was being requested and you're suggesting one point seven, so.
Half.
So my, yeah. It looks like it'd be an increase of eight and a half percent per month for the standard collection, uh, not eight and a half, eight and a half cents per month for standard collection, five and a half cents per month for every other week, thirty gallon service, and four cents per month for recycling. That would be the motion.
Correct.
Motion on the table and a second, further discussion, Counselor Whiting?
Mr. Thompson, what was our legal issues with this, any concerns with that?
Mr. Mayor, no, the council, the contract clearly says they can request it, they're not, you know, and you can approve it. And you can approve an amount different than what they requested.
Other discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Republic. Moving ahead then to number eight A three, conduct of Counselor Lewis. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is my first time addressing the conduct of Counselor Lewis in a public setting. Normally, city administrators do not get involved in council behavior in a public manner. Excuse me. However, at this point, Counselor Lewis has been censured by city council, has been asked to resign on several occasions. And unfortunately, the conduct that led to those actions has not changed substantially, only his targets have. He continues to behave in a manner that is unacceptable for any workplace, let alone city government. First, I believe it is necessary to provide some background that city council and staff is largely aware of, but has not been outlined to the general public. When I was first interviewed in May of twenty fifteen, between interviews, I received a voicemail from Counselor Lewis. I was struck that he would contact me outside of the interview process and without knowledge of his fellow, fellow council members. This was clearly a breach of the interview process. I did not return that call as I felt too uncomfortable doing so. It was a beginning of a long list of issue, issues with Counselor Lewis's behavior. Although there was an effort to censure him as early as September of twenty fifteen, for many of the reasons I will soon cover, I argued against that effort. I had been in place just a few, few short months at that point and I believed that staff needed to try to do more, to work to educate and assist him to become a responsible council member. Frankly, I also did not want the city to be saddled with a reputation of having dysfunction to the extent that a council member would be censured. It rightfully should only be used as a last resort and only after all other options are extinguished. I had never seen it used in any community with which I was familiar. Censure had to be a last resort in my mind. Also, there was some concerns among staff how Counselor Lewis might react to such action. They were fearful. Over the following nineteen months, it became clear that no effort on staff's part was going to change his conduct. Nor were the efforts of Mayor Mars or of the city attorney and others who worked to try and help Counselor Lewis understand his actions were a major issue and that his conduct was unacceptable. In April of twenty seventeen, I withdrew my objections on the matter and it proceeded by council directions. It was the last option, nothing else had worked. The official censure occurred on May second of twenty seventeen with a four oh vote in favor. During the hearing, Mayor Mars stated, this is not a proud moment, but I've talked to you probably a dozen times about it, including with the city attorney. I think the city of Shakopee deserves better. I think the residents deserve better. I think the city staff deserves better. Some of us have tried very hard to talk with you over the last year or so and it hasn't changed. Although the censure did include some of the issues, it clearly did not include all, if for no other reason than that there was so much activity that legal council decided to focus on some of the most egregious matters. The censure noted that Counselor Lewis's actions over the past two years. The censure noted that Counselor Luce's actions over the past two years had consistently violated city principles, policies, and norms of behavior in the following regards. Number one, misrepresenting the city's official position on matters. Number two, inappropriate comments to the public bashing city staff. Number three, overstepping his authority with respect to city staff, resulting in some city staff members feeling intimidated and threatened. Number four, undermining the city administrator's responsibility and authority. Number five, improperly interfering with city staff's handling of real estate matters in regards to the city's efforts to acquire certain parcels of property. Number six, micromanaging manners within the fire department. And number seven, improperly intervening in a property dispute matter. And we'll hear a little more about that later. Counselor Luce was officially censured, was stripped of his committee assignments, was given a non-contact order with all city staff except for the administrator, and banned from attending any internal staff meetings. Ultimately, the legal costs just for dealing with Counselor Luce's issues and ultimate censure resulted in nine thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents. Unfortunately, all the efforts by staff, the mayor, other elected officials, and even legal counsel did little to curtail, to curtail Counselor Luce's behavior. Not only was the effort wasted, it had cost the city almost ninety-five hundred dollars in legal fees. So why was this all such an issue? What was everyone so concerned about? Let me give you insight to the breadth and scope of his behavior. And as I run through this list, ask yourself if any organization should have to put up with even a small portion of this conduct. Since June of fifteen, he has actively harassed, targeted, stalked, or otherwise maligned the following individuals. A former mayor. A former mayor's spouse. He had actually contacted the spouse's workplace to try and have them fired due to uncorroborated and non-factual special information that he had uncovered. The current mayor. A council member actually stalking them for over a several month period. The council member's spouse, who again, he contacted the workplace of the spouse and tried to have them fired due to erroneous information he uncovered during his independent quote-unquote investigation. Another city council person who he accused of embezzling funds from a charitable activity, which was patently false. At least in that case, he gave the name of someone who could corroborate. And that individual was stunned when they were questioned by the police. They had no idea what Counselor Luce was talking about. And the city staff leadership team, he has gone after the fire chief, the assistant fire chief, the police chief, the former Parks and Rec director, and even the assistant city administrator before the assistant city administrator had been on the job for one day. He has consistently maligned the fire department duty crew. He has also harassed and bullied the former economic development manager and the former HR manager. The HR manager actually had their, the gall to refuse to let him have interview records associated with the city job in which one of his children had applied and who did not get an interview. He barged into the HR office and demanded the records so he could determine while she was not given an interview and so he could determine who the best candidates were. He has also gone after the building inspector for not taking action on a building that he determined was a safety issue but which had been reviewed by city staff. By the way, he has also harassed the owner of that building and its former tenant, who he's had a very longstanding grudge against, and decided as a council person that he could finally settle it. The poor building owner had no contact with Councilman Luce other than he happened to own the building of Counselor Luce's foe. Counselor Luce even went to the lengths of contacting the insurance agent holding the policy insuring the building and tried to get the policy canceled. He also went after the land owner, land owner adjacent to one of our parks in Killarney Hills, who has, who had been discovered to have encroached on city parkland, which was one of the issues he was actually censured for. But more on that later. As you might suspect, this conduct caused real concern and even fear among city employees. Due to that, we instituted several actions to restrict his access to employees and to keep them safe. Before he was, he was actually barred from employee conduct through his censure. We rescinded his key card privileges and barred his access to public buildings. We also ensured that at least one police officer was present anytime he was at a city meeting. Although his personal interactions are the most troubling parts of his conduct, Counselor Luce has adversely impacted the organization in other ways. Councilman Luce used to be epic in reporting code violations he would amass by driving around the city and conducting personal quote-unquote inspections. Every two to three weeks, he would bring in several notebook sheets of fifty to seventy-five of these violations either to myself or Chief Tate and demand we take, take action. And that was also with the former city administrator as well. However, it became clear that if you are a friend of Counselor Luce, you never made that list. The most troubling aspect of his code violation activity is that Councilman Luce's property at one point was described as being one of the top five worst properties for code violations. As you know, we have a complaint-based code violation process, which generally means someone's complains and then the city will review the situation. In Counselor Luce's case, no one was willing to initially complain. Apparently, no one, no one wanted to make him angry and have him come after them. Ultimately, Counselor Luce was restricted from making code complaints under our policy due to his use of the process to harass and target citizens. He is the only person to have been addressed in this matter by our policy. Counselor Luce is also the city's most prodigious requester of records and has requested the following documents in the last year or so, some of which are on the table in front of us today. He's requested all records associated with the Killarney Hills encroachment issue. The home address for a council person that he was stalking and harassing, which by the way, we did not provide. All emails associated with a resident who Counselor Luce has a grudge and which was part of his censure. And the property he was renting for his repair facility. All records associated with the multiple code violations surrounding Counselor Luce's home and property and the subsequent enforcement case brought against him for code compliance. All emails. Every email. Between me and every other member of council. Records and emails associated with various issues surrounding the hockey association. All records that he had been previously copied on. All purchasing card records for myself as the city administrator. All records for all expenses for each council member from 2014. And a full calendar of my copy, excuse me, a full copy of my calendar since I began employment, which by the way, I did not provide and I'll go into in a few minutes. In total, Counselor Luce has received over seven thousand two hundred and fifty-eight pages of documents at this time. The approximate dollar value, and it should be noted that those are the documents that we actually could release. We had to go through multiple, multiple, multiple copies and other determinations to figure out what we could turn over to him. The approximate dollar value in staff time for the review and processing of that amount of paperwork is about sixteen thousand three hundred and forty dollars. When questioned by the mayor on his records request, Counselor Luce's response was, "Because I can." In an email to me, he stated more clearly, "You for some reason are unable to accept the fact that I'm going to question whatever I want, whatever I want and whomever I want and you have no power to stop me." Censured, stripped of committee assignments, asked to resign, given a non-contact order with city employees, banned from attending any internal staff meetings, publicly asked to resign by his colleagues on several occasions, revoked key card access, police officer presence to ensure public safety, banned from turning in code violations. All to no effect. Counselor Luce routinely violates the term of his censure and routinely continues to harass and bully. He violated that term of censure today. At no time, even after his censure, did Councilman Luce take one small piece of responsibility for the pain, mental distress, and sleepless nights he has caused city employees and some residents. It appears that the only thing that works with Counselor Luce is the public scrutiny of his actions. Frankly, it is time to turn on the light and let people see who really dwells in the swamp. To that end, in order to try to rectify the situation for the future, any violation of a censure, any harassing email or phone messages, any request for documents, any reported troublesome interaction with residents, any code violation, any conflict with fellow council members will be brought to this body as part of the administrator's report. In short, any attempt, any attempt to harass, stalk, intimidate, malign, or undermine anyone will be brought forth to this body as part of the administrator's report. This has to end. And if it does not end, at least everyone will know about it. To that end, I would like to publicly address briefly two articles that Councilman Luce has published in a local newspaper. Let's call them fake news. In the first, from late April, Councilman Luce writes about how the city pushed out some Shakopee residents who were toy collectors. Much of what Councilman Luce states in the article is simply factually incorrect. The city received a complaint about a large storage container in the back of a yard. The unit also encroached upon the alleyway a bit as well. The initial complaint did not come from a city employee. The owner of the storage container was not targeted. Even though the complaint was for a specific property, our police department did a sweep of the entire neighborhood. City staff actually worked very hard, and frankly, Nate went above and beyond in this respect, to try to find some, some way to help these people out with their issue. We offered to move the container to City Hall property behind the Public Works building, that was not acceptable. We offered to store the donated toys on the second floor of one of the buildings that at the time did contain bathroom fixtures, but those were scheduled to be moved out so that the toys could be in there. That was not acceptable to the resident either. We then offered the space that our engineering department was vacating on the first floor of the engineering building. Again, not acceptable to the resident. At that, at that point, I became very uncomfortable with the effort that we were, we were providing to a single resident. Because frankly, if, if we were to do this for one resident, we really had the responsibility of helping anybody else in the same manner, and we did not have the ability to do that. Ultimately, I had just one conversation with the residents, and that was after their initial court appearance. I asked them what their solution was besides keeping the storage unit and asked them to provide that solution to me in writing. We never received anything further from the resident and ultimately, they removed the storage unit. The city did not in any way hamper their ability to find other non-violating, violating storage solutions. I do recognize that the city steel's Christmas headline was great, but unfortunately, that was not correct. Counselor Luce's next tale from the swamp refers to the encroachment issue on the Killarney Hills parkland, which was actually, as I stated before, one of the issues for which Counselor Luce was ultimately censured. The issue came to light, frankly, when I noticed during a staff presentation an overhead photo that clearly showed there were a couple of storage sheds over the property line and part of a driveway that appeared to encroach upon the Killarney Hills parkland. Prior to this, there had been no issue because it never had been noticed. The driveway had been in place at least since the early nineteen eighties. I asked staff to contact the owner of the sheds and have them moved, which code enforcement did relatively soon thereafter. The resident complied with no issues. The partial driveway was a harder issue to solve. We had the property surveyed to determine the lot lines. The resident stated that he had believed there was an easement that he was trying to locate, but the title company was out of business. Staff gave him time to try and find the easement. When that did not occur, we gave him more time to try and negotiate with his neighbor to establish an easement on that prior, on that property, prior to the city looking at granting one on our park property. If, if the individual could not do that, then it would make no sense for the city to look anymore at the, at granting an easement on our part. That was not successful and staff informed the resident that the encroachment needs to be removed and returned to grass. Now that winter is over, it's expected that that will, that will happen very soon. To be upfront, this was not a real priority. This, again, this driveway had been in place since the early eighties. There was no development occurring on the parkland. The goal in any code enforcement case is compliance. Not punishment of residents. We will routinely give residents time to address issues if they are moving forward towards compliance. This is something Counselor Luce knows very well. Even he was given two separate extensions by city staff during his code enforcement case, and he was a repeated offender. Unfortunately, Counselor Luce became infatuated with this particular case and even though he was fully brief as to what staff was doing and why, as were all council members, he came up with another reason. He states the following in the article. "I believe that I have an answer that will shock all of you. The offending property owner is a friend of the mayor. During my time on the city council, I have learned that if staff at the behest of the mayor want something to go away, drag it out and hopefully, any interested party will tire from waiting and lose interest. Then they, the mayor, wins. The mayor and staff have learned that I do not tire and will not quit. Although there is no doubt that even censure will not dissuade Counselor Luce. Everything in this statement is not only patently false, it is a slap in the face to the police department and the engineering and public works departments who have been handling this issue. This is nothing more than a falsehood, this is a lie. It only exists in Counselor Luce's mind. At no time has the mayor or counselors Lehman, Whiting, or Mokel ever requested that I or any staff provide some favoritism on an issue. That is not ethical. The only person who has ever requested such action has been Counselor Luce. In regard to one of his friends who has a business on First Avenue and routinely parks lawn mowers and snow blowers on the city street. My response to Counselor Luce's request after my initial shock was to inform him that residents will be treated fairly and the same regardless of who they might be friends with. There are other issues out there, including Counselor Luce's efforts to barter his vote on a couple of issues. Discussions that stunned other elected officials, one on city council and one on the county board. But I will leave that to those who were subjected to the proposals to discuss if they wish. Finally, I would make a public request of Councilman Luce. Please stop following city employees as they drive through town. Please stop trolling city parking lots. And lastly, please stop driving by my house. It's just plain creepy."
Thank you. Counselor Luce?
Yes.
Comment?
Yeah, that is so much full of BS that it's unbelievable. How anyone can read that amount of bullshit and do it with a straight face is beyond me. If I've driven by his house, it wasn't to look at his house. I do service work in town.
So. Bert, you drive around town a lot?
Yeah. Okay. So, if I happen to drive by your house more than once and it creeped you out, boy, that's a real tough Marine, I tell you that. Get creeped out by somebody driving by ya? Jeez. You know, as far as the rest of that stuff, I could take them apart piece by piece, but, you know, you're gonna believe what you want and
And you are too. Counselor Luce, you wrote an article in the newspaper, or the other, from the swamp. How is it that you know so much about the swamp? In this article, you accuse me of several things. None of it is true. I, I am not here to protect a friend, nor have I influenced staff in any way. However, you have interjected yourself into the issue and been in active communication with one side of the issue. Tearing apart a neighbor-to-neighbor relationship of long term. Time in and time again, you work backwards to grind, grind away ridicule staff, take unprofessional shots at fellow council members. The last time in the newspaper, you accused me of missing one email, but you never called, you wrote an article.
You want my phone dumped so you can see that I called?
Mike, Counselor Luce, you brought up a twelve-year-old resolved issue about Counselor Whiting. From toy drives in another community From toy drives in another community to saying you can't vote for Canterbury, and then said you had a lapse in judgment, and then four days later you voted for Canterbury expansion again. Wow. Then, on March twenty eighth of this year, from the swamp, I got a call, and you said that you can't vote for a couple of major projects in the West End without some movement on a couple of your pet issues. On top of that threat or statement, you made the same threat and statement to a major significant business leader in our community, as well as a sitting board, board of director member of one of those projects that was about to be before us. It really sounds like you're playing swamp politics to me, and yet, no one else is playing along with you. For almost four plus years, and over a year ago, you were censured by this council with due cause. Your actions alone have caused it. You own it, and everybody else, but you own it. Now you're using taxpayers' money. How much was it? Twenty-five thousand dollars in money, time, and effort to get unneeded, copious amounts of information that seems just for your use, not the public's or the public's benefit, for your use, because you're not thinking that you're getting the same information, and you continue to blame others. You are not helping building a city. You are attempting to tear it apart down to the swamp level. I have told you before, this is unacceptable, and I think it's really unbecoming of a council member in our community. Over all my years, we have never had anything even close to this, and it continues. And you use the press? You, you write articles and maybe you had a lapse in judgment, I'm not quite sure, but I sure wish it would end, and that's my comments on this issue. Councilor Whiting?
You know, I, I feel bad that the community has to see this, and I, and I, I wanna feel like I have to apologize to staff for your, your issues and your efforts that undermine this community, and, and I have a problem with that. I have some concerns about the Shakopee Valley News actually even printing some of this lies, and I just don't understand. Maybe they need the, have a space that they need to fill. I, I don't get it, but I don't know why they give you that opportunity. Then you reported last week, and I hope this is wrong, but I heard that you, you gave your presentation about going to the gala for the, for the Saint Francis Foundation, and then somebody told me that you never paid for the ticket. That is just unfathomable to me. I just don't get that. I, I can't believe that that would happen from a, a elected official, and I hope I'm wrong on that. I've asked you this before, and I'll ask you again. I think, and I would like to ask you to resign.
Give you the same answer I gave you the last time. And as far as the so-called violation today that I did with staff, I called the chief to report a chest freezer sitting in a driveway that is a child killer. If you look up the statistics on how many kids are killed in those, it's unconscionable to me that someone wouldn't take care of that immediately. So, in my book, I did the right thing to call him. If I call the administrator, it's like talking to a wall. He does nothing. He won't return phone calls, he doesn't email returns. It's ridiculous. I'm only allowed to contact somebody who will not return any contact. So...
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna take a shot? Go ahead.
No, uh, Councilor Luce, I, Councilor Lehman?
Make a motion for a short recess.
We just have a couple more things on the agenda.
Yep.
All right. Second?
I'll second it.
Uh, I have a motion on the table and a second. Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, we'll be in recess for five minutes. Welcome back to the City of Shakopee City Council meeting for May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. We're on nine A, the two thousand eighteen police annual report.
Nine A one.
Oh, I apologize, look at that. Nine A one, other business.
Sorry.
Layman?
Okay, Mayor, I, I asked this to be on the agenda because there's a couple items I wanna have a discussion with, uh, our council with. The first one is the other business line on the agenda. The, the other business line on the agenda, the, the purpose in my opinion for that to be on the agenda, and it should be returned to the agenda, is that gives everybody here an opportunity to talk amongst your peers, the elected body, on issues that are brought to you by your constituents of mutual concern to the community. From my perspective, I see it as the only avenue available to an elected representative to have a proper discussion with your elected peers. Matter of fact, it's the only legal option we have to have a discussion representing our constituents with our elected peers. We can't meet one-on-one and then go to another, that would be a serial breach of the open meeting law on an item that might come before council. We can't all just go to a bar and talk about it. That's obviously a violation of the open meeting law. So that item is specifically for that purpose. It's also to bring up items that are of mutual importance to the community, us and the city, um, or maybe for a discussion to see if there's support among this body to move forward with it. Without this on this agenda, it's very hard to, to bring forward something from a constituent, or even my own ideas that I think are better for the community and the city at large, uh, there's no, there's no opportunity to do that. So, I'm requesting that this body put that back on the agenda, and, or directing staff, we can't take actions on items not on the agenda. This was not on the agenda, so I'm not ax, ax, asking for any action tonight. What I'm asking is if there's support by this body to allow us to be able to represent our constituents with our elected body in a public setting, um, and direct staff to make that happen. I understand that it's, it's not a tool to be used for personal attacks and, and things that aren't of concern to the community at large. I, I get that. I also understand that there are constituents that have come to me and said, and the guy standing in front of me saying, you're, I want you to bring this to council, and I'm like, can you call the city administrator? And they're like, no, I'm coming to you, it's your job to bring it up to council. Now what am I supposed to say to my constituent when they're telling me that? I come to this body, I put it on the agenda, I bring it up, we talk about it, we go from there. That was exactly what happened with the can't hear us on the mics issue. So, I was watching Saturday, I believe it was, I was watching flipping channels and I caught the planning commission. The planning commission has other item, other items on the agenda. The park board has it on their agenda. We don't have it on the agenda apparently because it's been abused by some. So what I'm asking is that we put it back on the agenda so that guys like me, that, all I wanna do is represent the people that have, that have elected me, and even those that don't, don't vote for me. I don't feel it's proper, I don't have the proper avenue to do my constitutional obligation of representing people that tell me to talk to my council about this. I can't talk to them short of being here legally. So, I understand that it would make sense to put some stipulations on it. I mean, it should be, yeah, items of mutual interest to this body, to the community, and to the city as a structure. Um, I, I think if a constituent comes to one of us and says, I want you to bring this up at council, we should have that constituent's name, address, phone number, and turning in to staff if it's, if they're, if they're not asking to be anonymous or whatever, confidential. Council should be able to have that information if they're not asking for that. But I think it's important for staff to have that information so they can actually follow up and make sure that what's communicated here by one of us isn't miscommunicated, and they can actually talk directly to the person or entity that has the issue. So I don't, I don't have a problem with that. So that's the first thing I'm asking for, and I've got a couple other small talking points that I'd like to make outside of that. So that would be my first request.
Let's talk about them.
Yes.
Councilor Mokel?
I have two suggestions for that, is it was very easy for you to add other items to the agenda tonight, correct? I mean, that would be my first piece, is that you bring it up when we're modifying the agenda is something that you want to add to it. It was very simple. The second piece that you could do is just call the city administrator and ask him if he will put that on the agenda at some point, and he can add it again at the appropriate time onto the agenda. Whether or not we have other on here, it makes no difference to me, but the correction that I could see to your point is if other commissions have other and we don't, then maybe we make them all the same. If we don't, then we do it to all the commissions and we just say, no more other. That's my solution.
Councilor Whiting?
I agree with both of you. You added the, the microphone piece and the item tonight. I don't see why it wouldn't be a problem to have that on there for other issues. I, I think maybe a time limit, and I think if, even if we don't have a specific community member, we should be able to add items. So I, I would support your idea for that.
Mayor, the...
Councilor Lehman?
The, the concern I have with taking it off other boards and commissions is I wanna encourage all of our boards and commissions, including this council, to have public dialogue on behalf of the people that we represent on issues that may not necessarily be on the agenda, that are appropriate for discussions. And, and I think it, it takes away from, you know, and nothing personal, I'm just gonna use the planning commission as an example, and I'm making this up as I go, let me be clear, but let's hypo set, hypothetically say it's, it's not on their agenda, their meeting's closed, and, and there's a legitimate concern by a member of that body that says, you know, I wanna talk about, you know, the lighting in the room, or, you know, the microphone, or whatever. They don't have that opportunity, and like us, is it, is it in everybody's best interest in the name of transparency to have these conversations outside of the public eye? It's not.
I get that. I, I think that it was removed because it was abused.
Well...
And, and wait, wait, so, we have a recognition of citizens on an item not on the agenda. Just share with me a little bit, that's the opportunity for public participation, not on agenda item. Other business on our agenda sounds like it's a council thing.
It is.
Two different things. So, when you say, well, you wanna be transparent and allow the public, other business is not per se for the public, that's where recognition of a citizen would be.
So maybe I wasn't clear, Mayor, and I'll try to be clearer, because I used an actual case on the microphone issue. That person came directly to me and said, you're gonna bring this up to council, and I said, can you call the city administrator? And he made it clear to me that he's telling me, I'm not telling him, I work for him, which he's right. Correct?
Well, yeah.
He said, no. He said, "No, you're the elected guy. I'm asking you to bring it up to your, and talk to the council about it." Am I supposed to tell him, "No, I'm not going to do what you're asking me"? It was a legitimate concern.
All right.
Mr. Mayor Fane.
Okay, Counsel, Mr. Reynolds.
I agree with the majority, if not all, of what Counsel Lehman is talking about. The reality is, is this was taken off because it was being abused. And, and, and you know what? That Band-Aid's been ripped off now. Everybody knows who was abusing it and why. And it's unfortunate that that was occurring. I have no problem bringing this back onto the agenda if restraints, constraints, so it's not being used to bash city employees, so it's not being used to talk about things that have been resolved two to four years ago, if it's not being used to try to manipulate people. You know, I've got no problem with that.
Counsel Lehman.
I have a hard time with this philosophy of, "There's somebody that lives in Shakopee that has gotten a DWI. Let's take everybody's keys away." I don't buy that concept, that, "Let's punish everybody for the actions of one."
Well, the one piece that I don't agree with Counsel Lehman on is that when I put this in place, I said, "If anybody, except for one person, has something that they want on the agenda, give me a call. I'll put it on." That does allow staff some time to look into the issue, but that being aside, I have no problem putting it back on the agenda, but let's control it in regards to abuse.
And I don't have a problem with putting on some basic controls. That's fine.
Let's try to work that through then.
Okay.
I want to ask about the name of our resident, so they would need to provide, they can't be anonymous.
I don't think, it doesn't need to be anonymous. I'm saying that, let's say, example, Mr. Smith comes to Mr. Mars and says, "I want you to talk to the council about sidewalk or something," and doesn't, he doesn't want to talk to engineering. But he says, "I don't want my name put out in public." That would be anonymous, but you have a name, address, and phone number that you're going to give to staff.
Oh, okay.
You can give it to council, but understand, we aren't going to tell the newspaper who it is, because that resident doesn't want it to be in public.
Supply the name to.
Well, it's not a legitimate concern if you don't have something, somebody attached to it.
Right. Well, I've taken anonymous phone calls. I've gotten anonymous letters. I don't do anonymous.
You can bring that up under other business as your own concern, if they don't, if they want to be anonymous. And then this body can, is supposed to have these discussions and see if there's support to do anything or not. I mean, I
That was one of the items. So obviously, we can't, the next item would be, we can't take any action.
Correct.
But we could build consensus
Correct.
and direct staff.
Correct.
And then no censured council member.
So I'm asking if there's consensus of council to put that back on the agenda with some, you know, simple guide rules, I guess, is what I'm asking.
I'll put it back on the agenda.
Okay.
I've got no problem doing that, as long as we understand what the issues are.
Counsel Lewis.
So you're going to limit my ability to input on this.
You can be part of the discussion.
Basically infringing on my civil rights as well as my elected rights.
But you've been censured.
Censor doesn't cover that.
I see that you, you know, let's not try to go over this. The point was that this has been abused. I have a person and, on this date, this happened, and who was it? I can't, you know, and there's no framework. Bringing up items from ten years ago, five years ago.
As Counsel Lehman said, a lot of people want to remain anonymous. There are such a thing as leaks. People leak things. Some people don't want their name anywhere.
We have to, we have to be able to verify. If, I mean, you call 911 and say, "There's something happening over here," they're not just going to say, "Okay, send out all the rigs." I mean, there's some verification that has to happen. And I don't think that's an unreasonable request, to have some kind of verification.
Counsel Whitey.
You know, we ask for other business, you know, are we saying when we modify the agenda, ask for an approval of the agenda, that we bring these topics up at that point?
No, we're asking now to
Leave it as other business.
Place it on there and put parameters on it.
I believe, I believe you need parameters. I agree with having it on there.
Okay. Can I go to the next one?
Well, so consensus?
I'm going to do it, so.
There we go.
All right, next.
The next one is EDA-related. I'm asking if, at some point, relatively soon, this body would agree to have some kind of a discussion, a workshop discussion, on the overall EDA. What it is that we're trying to accomplish, what's the scope. The reason I bring it up is because it was, it was a last council, and early on in this council, the last action we took was to change the business subsidy policy. We raised the wage, wages a little bit, and that's really all we touched on. But prior to that, the past council, its direction, and J, Counsel Whitey, apologies, was a part of that. And Counsel Ramon may have been also. But at that time, we were looking specifically at creating jobs at a certain number and certain wage. And that was really the scope of EDA. And the scope now has changed, and it wasn't by a necessarily, I don't want to say it wasn't by an action of this body, because all of the actions have come to this body, but it wasn't a an overall understood concept of, it wasn't something that we talked about as a body, or even with community openly. So I, you know, we're now buying properties, we're buying, tearing down, giving away, selling.
Economic development.
You know, we're doing a lot of other things here outside of the core of jobs. And, and I think it would, you know, and again, if you want to fix the problems that we have on this council, that I think we have on this council, we all talk about communication transparency, all these other things. What I'm trying to do is use a lot of years of experience to try to overcome it. I'm not one that has ever had a problem losing a vote. I'm also not one that has ever beat up on a staff member, okay? I'm a process guy. I will beat up anybody if they're using the wrong process, as you all are well aware of, on the Canterbury Downs Conference of Plan Amendment requirement by state statute.
Well.
And I think it would go a long way to have a, just an open discussion on, you know, what exactly are we doing, where are we going? We can disagree, which we probably will, and that's absolutely okay. But I think it's important that we have that discussion. It's open for the community to see. I think our residents, our voters, our constituents should know where each of us stand on these issues. And that is full transparency. And not only that, it's not a surprise. Everybody's got the same information. It's important. And I would like to ask that, at some point, we do that.
Counsel Whitey.
I would agree that, as part of the EDA, we have a workshop that would talk about some of the economic development tools, including all the different aspects of TIF, not only business development, but the, but the contaminated properties and the senior housing aspects. Talk about them, so the public knows all the different tools that we have to use and how we plan on using them. I agree with that.
You're in favor of a workshop.
Workshop.
Counsel Ramon.
I am too, and if anybody's been watching what happened in Seattle last night, I think that, or yesterday, that's part of it, is that
What happened?
So it's, they haven't been, so what they decided to do is create a business per person on business. So if you have fifty employees, you have to pay two hundred and seventy-five dollars a head.
A head tax.
Yeah, so they're doing a head tax, and it was because they really weren't watching what they were doing on the economic development side. And so now their housing units are, aren't affordable anymore. And so it's just one of those pieces, and so this is, this was their solution to deal with the homeless and those types of things.
A reaction to.
It's a reaction because they weren't doing their diligence in the beginning, and it's just interesting that we are having this conversation.
Counsel Lewis. That workshop, economic development, whatever you want. I have no input because I can't do anything but vote. So we have enough consensus to have an EDA workshop?
I think it's an excellent idea. Anytime that we can actually get together and workshop and plan and give direction to staff, you know, that's what we try to do each, beginning of each year in January. And my attempt is to have council try to think out a little more than just the year even, and so we have some long-term projects. But in the absence of direction, staff is looking at those goals that you set for us at the beginning of the year, and we're acting to achieve those goals. So I'm more than happy to move forward with that.
A couple of those are redevelopment goals, and then that falls under the EDA, so, but broader discussion workshop, that'd be good, okay?
Last one, Mayor, it's actually two, and I'm going to combine them into one. There's been requests of this body of staff. I'm not picking on any staff people. I'm just saying that there's been a request made that this body has either unanimously or the majority have given direction to staff that has never came back. Couple of examples would be Counseler Whitey had a sidewalk policy discussion that never came back.
That's on the whiteboard.
Right.
I remind him, believe me.
It is.
And I reminded you the other day.
Sign policy is also on the whiteboard.
There's others, and I guess what I'm asking for is that some of these are getting pretty old, and I'm afraid that they just fall off, and
Maybe an update?
I'm almost, I'm not sure, either, you know, maybe, maybe when we give these directions, we can put a date to it, you know, sixty days out, bring it back in second meeting of the third month or something. I mean, can we, can we do that? Or how do we do that so that we don't have these things that are a year and a half old out there that we forget about, but are important, and then we end up putting ourselves in a reaction situation sometimes?
And it could quite possibly be that we have forgotten stuff, you know? And, but, you know, the, like I said, the sign policy, I know, is one that we've got to do. The sidewalk policy is on the board as well. If there's any time that, you know, that you want an update, and what I should probably do is just copy the whiteboard and walk everybody through where we are on things.
Well, and maybe we take the, the EDA workshop idea, and we have, you know, four workshops a year or something, to where we put these things into it from that whiteboard and kind of deal with them, deal with them, deal with them, deal with them, and, you know, make these policy discussions in public and build consensus at the workshop and bring it back. Like I said, I've lost my share of votes, and I'm okay with that. It's just good to have them discussions and talk about the policy side of it and move it off the whiteboard, and either we're not doing anything, or we're doing something.
I think some of it gets down to priority, and, you know, no offense against sidewalks. If you look at Mr. Reynolds' whiteboard, it's got a lot of stuff on it, and, you know, okay, today sidewalks are, you know, I don't know.
Probably not the high priority.
Counsel Lewis.
Yeah, the sign policy, I think we need to do something about this sea of pop-up signs that are in the boulevards at different times of the year. I mean, it's ridiculous. It, you know, it obstructs the view for vehicles in many cases. And, you know, it's not technically allowed, from what I understand, in the right of way. If they want to put it in somebody's property and they get permission, that's another story.
And just an update, I believe our sign policy is coming in June. Michael?
Oh.
Is that right?
Mayor and council, the, there's going to be a workshop, the Planning Commission in June, and then it'll be to you for a workshop after that.
Okay, so.
And then just connected with that, is there a possibility that this body can set a date specific for Mr. Reynolds's review evaluation thing? I, it's got no connection with anything else.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
It's just that it's, it just keeps getting pushed around, and it, to me, I, and this is probably more Counsel Ramon's bag, but to me, it seems odd that the employee is telling the bosses when we're going to do it. It should be the opposite way around.
Yeah, and understand that with, and we can do it the same as I do the quarterly updates of our year goals. I, if you'll remember, I send those out, and probably getting close to getting ready to do another one, that updates those year-long, and then at the end of the year, you get a full what we've done on it. And I can do the same thing with those policies that are kind of sitting out there glowing.
I'm talking about your employment review.
Yep, he does it in combination. Goal plan update and
But not quarterly, unless you want.
I'm just saying, you know, we all turned in our stuff, and it's been
I can schedule that.
It just keeps getting pushed around.
Would you like it open?
You know, data privacy
Frankly, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Says that it's not open.
I can have that option.
I believe that's your company, not mine. I just want, to me, it's my whiteboard. I like to check things off and move on, okay? And it's the same with all these
I know June's filling up already.
We've got all the documents. We can do it next meeting.
By June first? Depends on calendars.
June fifth would be the next council.
By July first, so it gives them, you know, some dates.
Be July third, I'll change.
July, I'm trying to take July out of it. I don't know, trying to.
Well, we have, we give them a couple meetings to get it.
Today is, in the next eight, sixty days, how's that?
Okay, sixty days. That's what I was kind of doing, but that's pretty long. Yep.
We're out to July, that's
Well, June nineteenth is ninety days, or thirty days.
All right.
June nineteenth.
Sooner or later.
Sixty days, right? Okay, all right.
Counsel Lehman.
Yes, sir.
Other, other business? Thank you for those, a couple handful of things, I think.
An apology to the chief.
Chief Tate rewrote his, his report.
I'm sure Farmer's still awake back there.
Let's get, thank you very much. Chief Tate, welcome. The Police Annual Report in front of us. Glad to have you here. Tell us how we're doing as a community in your department.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Once again, I'm back for another annual report. Overall, it was a very good year for the police department. Like in years past, we've had a few higher-profile cases, and we, you know, with some of the venues that we have in, in our city, you know, there's things that happen at Valley Fair or Canterbury that are routine in other cities, but if they happen to happen at those locations, they're going to make the five o'clock news. Sometimes we find ourselves on the news a little more than, than some other cities, but that's why I enjoy the opportunity here to come and talk about this annual report, and let's put some perspective on what's, what's really going on in Shakopee. I know last year, we talked about whether or not the top ten locations every month in year end would go away. I have to give a lot of credit to Tammy Helgeson, our record supervisor. She puts, I know that was a concern of council, that you wanted to see these every month and at the end of the year. She does a lot of work to make sure that this, this can get done in our new records management system. A lot of familiar faces from year to year in this one. Obviously, the bypass is a huge part of our community. Your Walmarts, find me a city that has a Walmart where that isn't a top-ten location in their city. And your Valley Fair, Canterbury Park, the usual things. I do get some questions about, about the schools, and when they pop up into the monthly ones, and here you can see a couple of them. I've said this before, but the FBI will tell you, the average crime is committed by a male between the ages of fourteen and twenty-four years of age. Where do we have our highest concentration of males in that age frame? It's at our schools. They're so big now, they're really some small cities, if you look at the number of people in there. Again, we have four school resource officers, two in the high school, and one in each junior high. So there are a lot of theft things, theft of cell phones, those types of things.
Can I jump in?
Counsel Lewis first, I apologize.
Can you explain the calls for service at the police department? I think people are kind of wondering what that means.
Mayor, members of council, it can be We get a large number of walk-ins. I mean, that's not uncommon, I think, for a lot of departments. Some people feel more comfortable coming to the police department to report a domestic assault, because they don't want their partner to know that, you know, the police are involved at that specific time. Some people just have different questions. What about my neighbor? What do I do with this? So, you know, we're, we're open twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Even if, even if there's no one at the desk, you hit that button, somebody's going to come to the front desk.
Follow up.
How many people stop in at the police department, do a sale transaction, you know, a lot of companies You know, a lot of companies say, you know, if you're gonna do a sale with somebody you don't know, go to the police department, they don't have any problem with you doing it there and it's a very safe place to do it. Do you get much of that?
We got a, a lot more of it maybe a year or two ago. We were one of the first departments out there to say that we have a camera, a safe, and designate a safe location. Um, in fact, I was just before this meeting speaking to a group on frauds and said the same thing. Especially if you're doing Craigslist, meet at the police department. You know, our lobby is there, we have a spot with a sign in the parking lot that says, you know, this is under surveillance. So, we've always encouraged people to do that, um, every chance we get. I'll, every once in a while during the day, I'll see somebody do that. I know these Facebook garage sale sites are, are a lot more popular and you get to know, kind of know the people that you're, uh, doing these transactions with. But I've, I've had people in the community tell me, well, you know, I, I asked if they would meet me at the police department, they refused to. Well, I, it was a smart, smart, uh.
A red flag there.
Hit refer, reverse on that transaction.
I just wanted to highlight that for people so that they know that this is a safe place to do those type of transactions.
And our, our training room gets used by the public. I figured it out too, I'm sorry, I don't know the number right off, right offhand, but it's, it's, it's used quite a bit.
Good, so I have asked you this at other annual reports and, and when you get to the schools section. And, um, so I'm hitting you again with it, uh, about any kind of growth opportunity for, uh, working in within the, the schools. And, uh, do you see a need for more SROs or, or, uh, uh, different aspects of, uh, drug enforcement or something?
Mayor, members of council, the, the biggest thing we hear now, especially after the Parkland incident, um, is school safety. Are our schools safe and, um, what can we do? We're a free society, I don't think you can legislate your way out of this. Um, if people have evil in their heart, they, they can do bad things, whether it's with a knife, a car. Um, we try and mitigate that as much as possible, we've done drills. Um, our school resource officers and Sergeant Roddy that's behind me here has done countless presentations in the community to businesses and, and, uh, on, uh, active shooter response. We did a full-scale exercise, uh, last year at Valley Fair on these things. So, we, we train up on them, um, but as far as safety goes, you know, some, some cities are cutting their school resource officers.
Really?
And, and I know the, uh, Burnsville, Eagan Savage, uh, district has done that. I think they do that at their own peril. Um, we've had a good relationship in terms, you know, uh, despite the budget woes that the school district is facing. They've been very steadfast in knowing the importance of, of school resource officers and that was before this last incident. So, I, you know, we have, again, a lot of thefts, a lot of, you know, theft from backpacks, those types of things. Um, we had the drug dogs in the schools, uh, last month. So, we try and be as proactive as we can on, on the safety things. The, the value those officers have with those students, I, it's immeasurable. I, I really, really think they, uh, uh, they do a great job and they have a tremendous value, both to the district and the city.
Thank you.
In terms of calls for service, you can see that we're up a little bit, uh, from sixteen to seventeen. Still, when you look at calls for service, um, less than a third of the calls we go to actually involve a crime. Most of it is for, uh, either mental health calls, civil, uh, disputes, medicals, all the other things that kind of get put on that conveyor belt and at the end, you know, we expect the police officer to be able to handle. In terms of arrests, when you look at, uh, both the arrests and the warrant arrests, uh, that's one thousand seven hundred and eighty-six arrests. Our officers fill out a, uh, response to resistance report if they use any level of force whatsoever beyond an escort hold. So, if I, if you even back up a little bit and I have to push you back against the car, that's gonna generate a report. We did that a hundred and twenty-five times last year. So, when you look at the, the calls, that's, in terms of calls for service, that's less than one percent. About point five percent of all contacts result in any force used whatsoever. Of those one hundred and twenty-five reports, forty-two percent of them are just restrained, okay? That's the level of force that's used, you're just holding, pinning somebody up against the car. Uh, we deployed a taser six times in twenty seventeen. Uh, in terms of our arrests, we're, it's about six percent of all arrests result in any type of force used, uh, at all. And you think about the number of people we arrest that are under the influence of something or, or suffering from a mental illness, um, they're not always on their best day. That, those are very good percentages. We've been ahead of the game in terms of, um, de-escalation training, uh, years before post-board and the legislature mandated that for us. So, um, we feel good about that. We did have four injuries, uh, for our officers that were reported in, uh, twenty seventeen as a result of those, uh, use of force encounters.
Councilor Lehman?
Any of them, uh, injuries long-term?
Yes, we have one person that is still out right now.
One of four is long-term?
Yes. Part one crimes, uh, as you know, the FBI category categorizes your most violent crimes into part one and, and part two crimes. Uh, for part one, uh, you can see that we're down slightly. And I should probably have said this before in some of these monthly reports. I wouldn't, I ask you not to get too excited one way or the other on, on some of these percentages because frankly, some of our numbers are so low, you know, a hundred percent increase may not be much. We're not gonna celebrate being down fifty percent in homicides, um, just given the, the numbers that are there. But overall, um, again, part one crimes are most violent crimes, we're, we're down. Same happens with part two crimes. Uh, when I, when I look at this, obviously the vandalism sticks out to me. We did have quite a few last year, most of that were, um, getting into cars, smashing grabs. Uh, there was some spray painting, but most of it was, uh, your smash and grab type vandals. Property crimes are historically very, very difficult to solve. Usually these kids are in the bushes or running before you, you can get to them. Part of the reason we're bringing back what we've called in the past, street crimes, but this summer they will be our proactive policing unit. So, if you hear that, it's the street crimes unit, we've just renamed it.
Councilor Mokel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I noticed you have assaults in both part one and two. Um, where do you put like domestic assault or domestic violence?
Part one.
Part one? And now with those numbers, can you go back to that screen? Is it correct to say, cause we, sitting on the board of SBABW, I think the orders of protection are up and so I was wondering if that correlates sometimes with these numbers? Or how does that sometimes go?
I would attribute more, if there's order for protections up, I would attribute a lot of that to our victim services coordinator.
Okay.
And reaching out and her level of engagement with victims that we have. Um, I will double check, but, um, in terms of, I believe, now that I, I look at this again, I think domestic assaults are in part two.
Two, yeah, that's what I was wondering, thanks.
On your, I have a question, uh, Chief. Uh, vandalism is up a lot, uh, do you have any comments in regard to that or what we're doing or?
Well, uh, Mayor, like I mentioned, I, our big thing is we're getting our proactive policing unit started this summer. Some of that is just a staffing level. Um, they're gonna be plainclothes, they're gonna hit, um, a lot of these areas, a lot of our thefts. We've had a lot of mail thefts in the first quarter. There's a lot of just kind of hotspot policing that they're gonna do. They will be, like I say, in plainclothes. We've had that unit in the past and they've had great success, especially, yeah, street crimes with some of our, uh, our frequent flyers. And we do have a frequent flyer program. So, we will, uh, hopefully give them lots of attention this, this summer. But yeah, that, I mean, that is a spike, that is, but again, some of that in the years past, we've been seeing vandalisms go down. And when we talk, when we look at historically how, where we stack overall, um, we're not in panic mode. But yeah, when you see something go up like that, certainly we're, we're responding to that.
The domestic, you said it was on two, is that under family or what is it?
No, that would be under assaults, it's classified under.
Considered an assault, okay.
Our top three crime comparison, this is again, uh, the exact same, uh, that was, you've seen the last three years. I will caution, I, I know that three years ago was the first time frauds came in and we've seen over a three hundred percent increase in frauds over the last few years. You see that it's down a little bit here. Uh, I will tell you, the first quarter, twenty eighteen, we're seeing it, it's up again. A lot of that has to do some mail thefts and gift card things, uh, that are, that are going on there. Uh, larceny theft will always be our number one, um, always has been and, and always will be.
Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I actually have a couple of questions. I hate to put you on the spot, Chief, but I'm looking at your, the one you have on the screen right now and if I take the larceny numbers and then if I go back to your part two crimes. Well, let's use the other one, let's use, uh, narcotics because that one's on part one crimes. But if I go narcotics on your top three comparisons, January to December twenty sixteen, two sixty-one, twenty seventeen, three oh nine. But if I'm looking at the full page of part two crimes narcotics, it says, uh, twenty seventeen, two twelve.
It's, it's how, Councilor Lehman, it's how the, um, when our record staff, this is a, a national, how you report it to the FBI. Uh, some of these may, there may be a higher charge and they always take the most severe charge.
Okay, so some of them were turning to something else.
Part two, when, when I, when you're seeing this, this is what we had total.
Okay.
So, I may charge you with, with, uh, a felony level narcotic and domestic assault, but the, uh, the highest charge goes, is what gets reported.
Because I was looking at that in, in all three of them and if I use what's on the, the part one and part two crimes numbers, don't jive with these numbers and it changes the percentage? And I was trying to figure out how does this?
They won't match and, and they haven't in the past either. But yes, that's a, that's a, uh, a reporting system that, that our record staff does and it's a uniform reporting system.
Okay, so at least you know I read it, okay?
It's not dollars, so you should be okay.
Never doubted you in the past, uh, Councilor Lehman, you have read these. In terms of citations, again, um, I say this publicly when I present this, you know, all of our, any fine revenue goes directly to the county to offset our prosecution costs. We're not out there in fundraising or any of those other cliches that you hear. Snowbird citations, I know you get plenty of complaints about the, the snowbird ordinance. Uh, I like to highlight this every year again and remind folks that we give out well over a thousand warnings for snowbird tickets before we start writing. Well, we do everything we can, uh, to educate the public as much as we can about our, our ordinance and we know people move into the community and we try and be as, as, uh, fair and reasonable as we can on, on that, but at some point the snow's gonna fall and the plow's gotta go. So, uh, the verbal warnings issued, um, that's just a, a new category that we're able to, uh, keep track of in our LETG. So, we'll, our records management system, so in years forward now, we'll have some comparables on that. Couple, uh, things on the miscellaneous here to talk about. Uh, number one, you'll see the jump in ordinance calls. Uh, that is a direct response to the community survey that we had, uh, that you were part of. I guess it's about a year and a half now. Um, but we started seeing, you know, over a year ago, that was one thing the community wanted to see more of, uh, was how we was dealing with some ordinances and, and you've responded as well with, uh, a position that's starting May nineteenth, their code compliance specialist. He starts on the twenty-ninth. We've also tried to do some things internally to make sure our CSO wasn't spending time covering the front desk, things like that, that we could do to, um, answer. And we did get more calls on that. The other thing is the DUI, I want to speak a little bit on the DUIs. You know, we've seen these go down and that is a good thing in our community. Our free sober ride home campaign has been well-received by the bars, by the participants. It's made the news in a positive light. Um, one, one bar even helped fundraise for our crime prevention fund to pay for these. And that's a free ride home that we started, uh, Thanksgiving and, or excuse me, Halloween, Thanksgiving, you know, on, on the, the bigger holidays. Today, we've given out, um, over one hundred free rides to over three hundred people in the community. I'm not gonna say that's the only reason that that's down because for everything millennials are or aren't, they use Uber.
Right.
I mean, they, they're, they're not the ones necessarily that we're, we're finding, uh, in, in, uh, on the DUI thing, so.
My comment though about, uh, I appreciate the free sober ride home. I think that's great that you guys are doing, but I wondered if, if Uber and Lyft had anything maybe to do with that.
Absolutely, and, and our local taxi companies have been, been good, uh, to work with on that program. Lionel Lakes I know just, uh, launched it too, so they're gonna do that. The thing that disturbs me about the DUI, um, in twenty seventeen, our average blood alcohol level was a point one-six. That is double the legal limit, okay? Somebody had a point one-six is, is a dangerous person on the road. That is the average person that we arrested. So, you can think about how high some of these, these other folks are. We're not finding people that are an O-eight. You know, they're, they're a lot higher. That's concerning and, and the number, I mean, you see the vehicles coming through on, uh, on the forfeiture side of things too. A lot of repeat offenders. And so we're, we, we stay very, very aggressive on that. We've been Mads Agency of the Year a couple of times and, um, we'll keep doing what we can to keep the road safe.
Well, Councilor Lewis?
That's part of the professional drinkers, I mean, they can drink way more than, you know, I'm not saying it's good. I'm just saying, you know, they're, like you say, it's a repeat offenders, they're constantly at it. Can you explain to people so that are listening how the sober ride works? How do they get a, you know, they contact the bartender, how do they?
We've been doing this and again, our Shakopee Crime Prevention, Inc., uh, has helped us with this in terms of, uh, paying the, the taxi companies. We'll probably do something on, uh, the July fourth, probably July third, uh, cause it's in the middle of the week. That'll probably be the big day. We advertise that on our social media, uh, the bars advertise it. We've got a flyer that we designed for that particular holiday, um, the, the taxi companies have them. And anybody that, that wants a ride, I think it's between nine AM and like three AM, or excuse me, nine PM, three AM, uh, gets a free ride home in Shakopee and ten dollars off any ride outside the city. It has to be home, we're not taking them bar to bar. Um, but it's been, it's, it's been fantastic. I, you know, we've gotten some really, really good feedback on it and like I say, it's, it's being copied, um, by one other city and I've had some interest from other cities on, on how we do it. Not every city licenses their own taxis, so it's a little easier for us to, to do that.
Councilor Lehman?
You know, I've been sober for sixteen years now? Maybe fifteen, but anyway. I look at this program and I, I'm like, why are we giving an irresponsible person, drinker, an irresponsible drinker a free ride home? Um, and the answer is twofold, I, in my mind. One is to protect them from themselves, but really it's to protect other innocent people from that person that, that may be irresponsible if not but for this ride. Am I looking at that right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, we want people to make good decisions and, uh, again, the Uber and the lifters, we, the people that are using the free ride home are not the young folks. They'd rather, I, it's all right here on their phone and, and their, you know, their ride drives right up. But, um, again, this, over three hundred people have taken advantage of this and a hundred rides, so.
Councilor Lewis?
So far, so good.
Yeah, I guess I wasn't maybe clear on my question before is how do they contact someone so that they can get the sober ride home?
Okay, the, um, the flyers themselves, all the information that we put out has the, um, city of Shakopee licensed taxis and their contact on there. All they, they have to call and say, I need a ride from Turtles home and they're there. All you have to do is show them the flyer and it's free. Or a ten dollar off your, your ride.
Outside the city.
In terms of case clearance rate, uh, as you know, when we look at, how do we measure ourselves? What are we doing, are we? Are we doing a good job with the cases that we get? Um, this is how we, I like to measure ourselves, even more than crime rate. And I'll get into a little bit of that, uh, on the why on that in, in a little bit. When you see vandalisms go up, I'm not surprised to see our case clearance rate go down. As I mentioned, those are difficult crimes to, um, to solve. But if you look at the historical average, our goal is always to be above the urban average, you know, for case clearance and, and we've done that. I'll, I'll put our investigations unit up against anybody in the state. They are a well-oiled machine, well-trained and they really know how to handle, um, simple to complex cases and. and they really know how to handle, um, simple to complex cases and, uh, again, forty-nine percent, we've, we've been higher and lower than that, and that'll fluctuate a little bit depending on, you know, you got a good theft ring in here, you get some kids, I know neighboring jurisdictions, a little over a year ago, had a lot of pellet gun, you know, glass breaking and things like that. That can really skew your numbers one way or another. But overall, um, this is a goal for us every year, and, and we continue to keep meeting that. We don't get this year, or twenty-seventeen's average until like July, so that's why you don't see that one. Now, before everybody gets too excited here, let me explain why these weights are, uh, uh, up so much. First and foremost, this is the Southwest Metro Drug Task Force. This is Scott County. This is Carver, McLeod, and part of Hennepin. This is a huge, huge service area. A lot of this ha, the seizures that you see here happened in, uh, McLeod County last year. Some of the reason from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, are there more drugs here? Not necessarily in the area. You've got a drug task force that's staffed fuller now, and they, and you're seeing more seasoned, uh, agents. That takes a while. Your first year in that role, you're not gonna, there's a learning curve there in how to cultivate informants and some, and how to work cases up, up the chain. Prior Lake added an officer, much needed, uh, but they added an officer to the drug task force. So you have another person there. Some of those numbers are too also from BCA cases that, uh, they worked in, in the service area that count for that. With that said, this is, this is what they're dealing with. Um, the marijuana, again, that's always been the highest. Why is it so high? A lot of that has to do, uh, marijuana wax. We, there's a lot of marijuana wax in the area. Um, and the meth numbers, I know heroin opiates get, get all the attention. The reality is, um, you saw this last year, you saw it the year before, meth, we are dealing with more meth than anything else. Uh, that is not uncommon. I think, I read the state report. I think every single drug task force in the state of Minnesota had, sees more meth than they did, uh, heroin or, um, opiates. The cocaine numbers, um, they went down, but they're starting to see a lot more, uh, cocaine in the area year to date.
Big numbers.
Big numbers, and we've, um, you know, lo, locally here with this proactive unit, I expect those, our numbers and our drug arrests to go up. Uh, because they're gonna be able to, you know, have more time and not have to necessarily worry about answering the call on the radio to do just that, be more proactive in some of these areas that we know transactions take place, and we'll be able to identify a few more folks. They've had a very, very good year last year. They've did some, some very, very sizable cases. Some I'm hope, one I'm hoping goes federal, uh, that involved a, a pretty, pretty long web of, of folks. Sergeant Harris is doing a great job there. Um, again, we have a sergeant that's in charge of the drug task force and a, and a detective that's an agent as well.
Counselor Lehman?
Chief, you said marijuana wax. I'm, I'm getting older. I'm probably a little out of tune, a lot with Jennifer over here. What is this?
Honestly, if Counselor Lehman, if you, you'd probably get a better explanation on what it is and how to make it watching a YouTube video.
Okay.
And what I can tell you, and that's, uh, all of this is on YouTube. It's sad, but it, it is.
It's a way of shipping it, or is this a way of?
No, it's, um, in fact, a lot of people are making it now locally. It's not just stuff they're getting out in Colorado. There's a way you can make it with the seeds. I can't explain it to you, um, but it is part of the edible, um, you know, put it on.
Being wax?
I don't think we want to sell it to our community as something to do at home either.
Would be a good, um, I want to use this time two, uh, two things. Um, a lot of departments are using Narcan and have it. We've had Narcan for a while. We just haven't advertised it. It's everywhere now. We used Narcan four times last year. Our officers did. Uh, it's a nice tool to have. It's a, unfortunately, a necessary tool that we have, need to have nowadays with, what they're licensing some of this stuff with, and the fentanyl, carfetanol, and it's, it's unfortunate, but it is a, it is a tool that we need to have.
Counselor Lewis?
Do all your squads carry the Narcan?
Yes.
And does that have an expiration date?
It does, and it is temperature sensitive. We do the nasal, so the price isn't as bad. The price has really come down. When that first came out, it was extremely expensive. Um, but it is something we have to take care of and, and babysit a little bit to make sure that it, it's gonna be effective.
Now, when.
I think the fire department, oh, they've left. I think they've all got it now. You know, when Alina's got it and, um, I think you can even buy it over the counter at Walgreens now.
When you use it, is that passed along to the person that you use it on, uh, you know, for service cost, or how does that work? Or is that just something the city eats?
You know, we've, Counselor Lewis, we've had, um, again, I think it's, oh my gosh. I probably shouldn't guess at how much it costs. I think it's like it's fifty, sixty bucks a dose.
Okay, so it's fairly reasonable.
We could, we've used drug forfeiture funds to pay for that too, so, um, we haven't passed that cost on. We try and follow up with those folks that, that we have had to use it on, see if they'll get in our recovery assistance program. We haven't had any luck with that either, but, um, I think we've used it a couple of times this year.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure. Some of the, you know, like the, uh, the one for bee stings, the price of that has gone through the roof. And I just wasn't sure if the Narcan was similar.
The price was similar when it first came out. I mean, it was, I think, a couple hundred dollars for a shot, and I didn't really want our officers sticking needles in anybody, and, and, uh, this nasal spray is actually quite effective and, and, very, very easy to use.
Good.
The other thing, uh, I do want to mention too, cause we did it with the Southwest Metro Drug Task Force. We had a presentation at the, at the high school, or excuse me, at the Junior High West, uh, this winter. I wish it would have been a little bit more attended, but it, it dealt with, um, you know, we had chemical counselors there that did a program with, uh, you know, what parents what to look for in a room, and I think that kinda, maybe we marketed it not the best way, but, uh, the sheriff, myself, and Sergeant Harris sat through that and said that was the best drug presentation we have ever seen. And I talked to a few of the people that were, uh, present there. I mean, they even got into cutting and depression and things like that that you can look at, uh, through children. We're bringing that back. And just so you know, when, when we advertise that again, anybody that has kids, um, hopefully we can bring that back in the fall. Uh, there's a lot of them. Some are hit or miss, you know, on some of the, of the drug education. This was a home run. It was very, very good, so. Crime rate. Depending on what Facebook site you visit or, or reading, you can, the city's either falling apart and it's time to move, or, you know, depending on the call, um, the reality is, last year was our third lowest crime rate. Um, I'm not gonna throw my shoulder out patting ourselves on the back on this. We try not to get too high, too low on the crime rate, uh, because there's a lot of things that go into that that we, we can't control, you know, like say a theft ring or something like that, uh, real organized comes into your city. Crime rate is based on your population. Everything that you saw, you know, in, uh, in our top ten, whether it's Valley Fair, Canterbury, the things that make us great, that draw over a million people a year, anything that happens out there counts against us i- in our, in our crime rate. And I think again, uh, I'm kind of a broken record when it comes to this. When you put it in the proper perspective, I think you see that we're actually a pretty, pretty safe community, uh, overall.
You measure this rate per hundred thousand people. Obviously, our town of forty thousand. But we have so many visitors that come through our community, right? And how, it must play a role in this number.
Mayor, members of council, it, it doesn't play a role in our rate. It plays a role in the, the crime that we deal with. Like I say, everything that, that makes it an exciting place to, Shakopee exciting place. Um, I mean, you see Canterbury, you see Valley Fair in there, and, and we have an emergency room. Not every city has an ER. Those, those types of places, a Walmart, uh, are gonna generate a lot of calls and a lot of, a lot of theft. Um, and we'll see that in, a little bit in the next slide, maybe a little, a little bit of perspective on this, but there's, there's a statistical formula that, that you put this in and it spits it out based on your population, the, the forty-one, whatever they have us at now. Uh, and that's the number that we get. I, I still have people say, you know, I can't believe everything that's going, all the crime in Shakopee. I go, what do you mean? And, and looking at this rate, that's not gonna make anybody feel good if you just had your garage burglarized last week. Um, but the reality is, crime has been going down. It's been going down nationally in most, most places. Um, we hope that trend continues, but again, first quarter of this year, everything's up a little bit. Most of the cities you see here, I think, are the ones that are, are, we use these because they were the comparables for contract negotiations. We're right in the middle. And I think if you, you told people that Prior Lake, and, and this is twenty sixteen because we don't have all the other cities until probably mid-June. But knowing that our rate went down in twenty seventeen, we'll stack up pretty good here too. But most people would probably shake their head if you said Prior Lake had a higher crime rate than Shakopee. The twenty fifteen numbers, Savage had a higher crime rate than Shakopee. We've had other cities in, in Scott County that have had higher crime rates than us. They don't have a Valley Fair, they don't have, you know, Canterbury, you know, those types of things. So, uh, the only real surprise here is Burnsville. Uh, with all the retail they have and, and everything that, that's, uh, in Burnsville, I would think they were a little higher, but, we are right in the middle overall, uh, with this. And I know, again, perspective wise, if you had a neighbor or somebody down your block had a bike stolen out of their garage five years ago, you probably wouldn't have heard about it. Now people post that on Facebook and everybody's talking about it. So that perception that crime is just always out there and on the front page, uh, can play with people a little bit in terms of how safe or unsafe the city is, and we try and, try and deal with that perception as much as we can while also being real. You know, drugs are an issue everywhere.
Counselor Lehman?
Chief, I've got a question. It just dawned on me. How does, when I say outside crime, how does that, uh, yeah, hard one to explain. I'll use my own personal example. Somebody got a hold of my credit card, got a call from, I think it was Fred Lee PD or something, some investigator guy. I called Shakopee Police because I didn't know this guy was an investigator and he wanted all my information. And I basically said, I'm the Pope on Sundays, you know, just at nine to twelve. And, uh, that's actually what I told him, which I probably shouldn't have, but I really didn't think he was a cop. So I called our police department and said, hey, you know, some guy's calling me and asking me for all this information. I don't know who he is. You guys checked it out and told me I should go ahead and give him this guy information. And then Shakopee took over that case because I live in Shakopee. Does that reflect on this if it was initiated outside but then was handled by us?
Yes.
So that's, okay.
And that pertains to frauds. Uh, there's a state law there that, the, the agency that, um, you know, you could have been up in Baxter or Bodette fishing last weekend for the opener.
Right.
And somebody got your credit card and you, you, if you report it to Shakopee, we would have to take that case. Now, most people report it to Bodette. A good police department will investigate that because they know they can go pull surveillance and, and those types of things. But if you reported that to us, yes, we would have to report that.
That would be in our notice, then?
Yes.
Even though it wasn't a crime here?
That, that's for frauds. For frauds, you'd be the victim in, in Shakopee.
Okay.
Most other crimes.
Go to the jurisdiction?
It's, it's the jurisdiction there, but frauds are, frauds are always a, uh, bit of a sticky wicked and, you know, it'll happen at a, you know, somebody use your card in Savage, Woodbury, uh, you know, all over. Who owns the case? Really? And, and sometimes we, we might struggle with that.
And then them departments work together on whatever. Good, okay. Did not know that.
This is a slide we've shown you three years in a row now. Uh, it's not getting better. Uh, this is only calls that deal with Alina responding, to a, a medical. And as you can see, uh, mental health is number one, and it's not even close. This does not count all the times our officers will be talking with somebody in a park that may be homeless, or somebody that's just not taking their medications. Something where, um, an ambulance wouldn't show up. And that's multiple times a day. Kinda gives you a little glimpse, again, of, of the extent of, of the issue mental health is in, in our area and in our community. It's why, again, several years ago, we, we decided we're gonna, we're gonna train everybody in CIT, which is the, um, critical incident training for, uh, to deal with mental health. Every one of our sworn staff has had at least the eight hours. Uh, we've got a good number of our staff that's been through the forty hours, and for the last, I think, two years now, every, nobody gets through field training without taking the forty hour course. We have to provide those tools with our officers. Just look at the frequency that they're dealing, dealing with this.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, what, uh, chief, what is inter-facility evaluation and compared to psychiatric or suicide?
Counselor Lehman, we get this slide from Alina, so I'm, I'm taking an, an educated guess because a lot of times they do, may seem silly, but they may transport from St. Francis over to the other facility. I mean, that's probably what it is. They're just going from one hospital to, to the other.
Alright.
So it is something that we're, again, well aware of. I know the county board's made mental health a, a priority. I'm glad to have Canvas Health and that, um, the Scott County Mobile Crisis is, is up and running. Uh, we haven't used it too much yet, but it's nice that we have something in the county that our county board at least has some ownership in and, and can start, we can start measuring things. We haven't been able to do that, uh, before. And then in terms of response time, uh, this is, again, this is your, uh, lights and sirens. Seven oh five, that is still, um, well below the, the national average and, and recommended average. Uh, our squads will get there in about three minutes. Uh, again, out of the, out of the four thousand nine fifty-six, though, a lot of those are to the hospital and transferring from one hospital to, to another, so.
Counselor Lewis?
What is the national average?
It's on this side over here.
I.
Showing it by year, and it's over here.
Oh, the response average.
No, I, I believe Counselor Lewis, the, um, last year I was told it was thirteen minutes. I can't remember the exact, um, thirteen minutes and whatever seconds it, it is.
So we're, we're well below that by almost half.
Correct. And in terms of future and where we're going, frauds are not going away. Uh, they're, they're everywhere. They take up a, an enormous amount of our investigative time. Our investigators are still balancing about a thirty, thirty case load per, and a lot of it is the frauds. And the time that they have to spend with subpoenas and following up with Facebook and Google and some, a lot of the things that, going on here, I, I do plan. We're in the, the vetting process right now, uh, for a, an ordinance that I hope to bring before you in June that will hopefully have something to do with all the gift card, um, have an impact, I should say, on all the gift card frauds that we've, we've been seeing at our big box retailers. A lot of those folks come from Florida, some from California. Um, there's, the average, I think, uh, loss to an individual is four thousand eight hundred dollars. So it's, it's not stopping. And the mail, the mail theft that we've had, uh, I've spoken to a, a number of groups today already. Please don't ever, ever leave the fly out on your, on your mailbox and put your outgoing mail and bills in there. You're gonna get hit.
Counselor Lewis?
How does that, uh, gift card, uh, fraud work? Do they print fake cards, or, uh, are they stealing the cards?
Mayor, members of council, there's a couple of things that they do. Number one, I'll, I'll give you an example of a, of a case that we just had, uh, recently where, uh, they're skimming, skimming the gas pumps. This group actually, y- you know, the red tape that they put over there, you think you're safe. Well, guess what? They found a, a way to order red tape and put it over, uh, to make you think like you're, you had it. Uh, this individual, uh, what they do is typically go to the self-checkouts. Nobody's gonna have any suspicion, anything like that. He had all these, he cloned these cards. It's an interesting video. He, he sat there, uh, and purchased a thousand dollar gift card at Walmart. The first card didn't work. The tenth card didn't work. The twenty-fifth card didn't work. The thirty-seventh time he swiped that card, he got a thousand dollar gift card and walked out the door. Uh, there's a couple other little things that they can do. You can, you know, the pin that you can scratch on the back on gift cards. Uh, good reminder, make sure it looks like that hasn't been tampered with because there's actually, they can scratch that off, get the number and the pin, uh, clone that card, and then once somebody buys it, they, and they, they can kind of a little tape thing they can put over it again, so it looks like, you know, somebody's actually gonna scratch it off again. And then once you activate it, they just check it every day. Once it's activated, boom, they can, they can use that gift card. So there's a number of, of So there's a number of, of ways that they do that. It is just, we're, the, the percentage that we have and, and hopefully this is a tool. I'm working with, uh, the Walmarts and the Targets right now, the big box retailers where we see this. Hopefully it's an ordinance that will be palatable to everybody. It's, as far as we're concerned, our, we, our research, nobody's doing it yet, so we'll see. But it would put some barriers in place on the gift card frauds that we see and, and, uh, hopefully curb that, at least in Shakopee. But yeah, there's, it's easy for them to do it, and then they can split those gift cards, they can use them to purchase anything else. They're out the door and off to usually Florida or California.
Councillor Lehman?
Mayor, uh, Chief, what, uh, I'm curious to what kind of case clearances we get on, on frauds in general. Ballpark it if you could.
Mayor members of council, I, I'd have a tough time ballparking frauds. Um, again, we've got some people that are really good at it. I, I'm confident standing here telling all of you that Shakopee's is gonna be higher than most agencies. Just because we understand, these are, these are real criminals and, and they're usually involved in the drug trade, and, and we wanna, we wanna get these folks.
Well, the reason I ask, Chief, is maybe, maybe you could get, get a national average for us. I just wanna get my head wrapped around just how big this problem is nationally. Because what I hear, you know, on little research that I have, is it's a huge problem.
The losses are in the billions.
Millions and billions of dollars.
Billions. Uh, I know the, you know, the FBI has a new fraud, uh, fraud complaint center. They've had over four million complaints. You know, there's nobody here in this room or, or listening, I'll bet, that hasn't had a call or a scam or, you know, had to change their credit card or been issued a new credit card because there was a charge. It's a pain. Um, hopefully I'll bring something to you in, in June sometime here that, uh, I wanna make sure we vet it with the retailers that this will impact first, so. It's not going away. And then staffing. I, I said this in front of Valley Fair in Canterbury, and they're looking at me like, really? You're gonna talk to us about staffing issues? Like everywhere else, you know, the applicant pools are, are smaller. We're, we're gonna start seeing some retirements. We're gonna say goodbye to some folks here in the next few years that have, you know, been longstanding employees with the, the police department and, um, that'll provide some opportunity to new folks, but. As you know, there's, there's gonna be two new additional officers we hope to hire on October first. And just getting those two hired and, and replacing the, the staff that we have is gonna be a, gonna be a challenge. It's gonna, um, really be a challenge. And then first quarter, uh, crimes reported. I've kind of been tiptoeing around this maybe a little bit, uh, so far, but, you know, we're up. Now, we're up from our third lowest crime rate ever, but we are, i- if you, you know, seen the last few months, I haven't seen April's final, final numbers yet, but. Um, we have seen a, a spike in, um, some vandalisms and then some, uh, again, your frauds and thefts, mail thefts typically. Wanted to make sure we, we highlight this too, because this was really, uh, another good year for us, and we had a toy drive, a diaper drive, a coat drive, a blood drive. All have been really, really successful. Uh, our, our staff, sworn and non-sworn, does a great job integrating themselves in the community. That is always a huge priority, uh, to us, whether it's cops and colons or loaves and fishes that you see there. We've, some of these programs got real, real nice press, um, in the Twin Cities media. Uh, we did get a couple of nice awards for our recovery assistance program, both from MAD and then, uh, an innovation award from the Humphrey Institute. So, um, this is what it's all about right here, and, and, um, we'll continue to, to keep being active in our, in our community.
Councillor Whiting?
Yeah, on this slide, I think that is the best, uh, the best slide, because I, I would, if you had a chart of those ten communities. I would think we would be well higher and above, and I, I, I just think we do a great job with community outreach. They still talk about the walking tacos down at the Loaves and Fishes, so, and I might have another opportunity for you down there.
Officer Hendricks is getting famous for those.
That's right, so, uh, it's, it's great. I love to see this part of it, so.
Councillor Lehman?
Uh, Mayor, Chief, the, uh, last question I have is internal succession plan for captains, sergeants, and any specialty individuals. Do we have anything like that, uh?
Absolutely. I think, I've said this to the city administrator, the worst thing to me would be someday when I leave, because we all leave at some, some point. Uh, if the, my replacement didn't come from within, then I would really consider myself of not have done a, a, a good job. Because the professional development of our staff is, is important. I'll put our training record against anybody's. I think we do a good job of prof- professional development with all staff. There's, we've got eight sergeants. Um, I do anticipate when those captain positions come, that will be a very competitive process. I'm really excited with some of the, like, the school resource officer position. I think we had seven or eight officers put in for that. We used to have to scrape to find somebody to do that. Our proactive policing unit, some of our instructor positions, there's a lot of ways in patrol you can, uh, do some professional development and be an instructor. Whether it's SWAT or other, other specialty assignments that we have, investigations. It, it all adds up and, and it's kind of my proud Papa moment here, but I, I will put our department up against anybody's. Our training, our ethics, our, um, our staff, I, I really truly believe that. I don't make any apologies or, um, have any problems saying that.
Without patting ourselves on the back, this council and past councils have been very supportive of our, uh, police department. Both in equipment and, and training and, and policy, so.
From, and I, I think you should pat yourself on the back. I'm not just saying that. I remember what equipment we had when I started here. And what, and just how that evolved over the years. I mean, I used to have a leaky propane tank in my squad and. I'm smelling pretty good every day.
On that note.
What we have, what we have now is, uh, it is, you know, I mean, that is, that has been something, and the training component of that, too. We've, we haven't been afraid to put, you know, send people to the, the best training or bring training in, and, um, sometimes you gotta pay for that.
On that, well, no, we have a, a fairly new body camera policy and, and, and active use of that. How is that going?
Mayor members of council, I'll say so far, so good. Um, it has really been a great process, I think, internally from the department's standpoint. In that we've had great participation from the officers. Um, they've all had good attitudes about this. I mean, ten years ago, if you'd have told me this was gonna hap- I would, oh-oh. This, this isn't gonna happen, but they wanted this. Uh, we have received one complaint about officer's conduct, uh, and reviewed that body camera footage. And in fairness, the, the dash cam video would have handled this as well. But you really got a good video of, of the whole interaction and, and the person on the passenger seat. Everything they said was, was wrong, and just like I have, I've been chief coming up on nine years here. And everybody I've invited to come in and watch a video, whether it's dash cam or body camera, has never taken me up on that. Because the, the complaint has fallen flat. Um, so it's, it's going, it's going good. There's been a, a foot chase or two, things like that. I, and I know we talked about this, wh- at the implementation of this. Any dynamic incident you see throughout the country, um, with a body camera mounted right here, it's not gonna be great video. You're not gonna get a high definition, you know, Steadicam, so you, you're gonna get your audio, but, um, the officers have, have taken to it well. It is an adjustment. It is a new part of the uniform now, and, um, so far, so good, but it also gives me a great opportunity to. You know, I just got another compliment on an officer today. I get way more compliments on our, our staff and our officers every week than I ever do complaints.
Councillor Lewis?
How many applicants do you get for Taser Trainer? And the reason I ask is because when I took the class, I found out that, uh, the trainers have to take it on a semi-annual basis or whatever. And they end up taking it for an extended period of time compared to what you can legally give it to a bad guy. And I took it for the five seconds. I don't know how they do it for the fifteen.
I, I think those days are over, too, in, in terms of how they get trained, but, um, you know, we're, we're actually gonna be adding, hopefully, some use of force instructors here. And, and again, giving some new opportunities to people. Uh, I think I forgot to say this. We, we deployed the Taser six times last year. So, that was up from, up from four the year before, so.
All successful?
Well, better than, better than deadly force.
Most, most of them are, I, I shouldn't say most of them, but in a lot of our cases, you know, you, I mean, you really do have to get two, two probes to hit. And, you know, if they're wearing clothing and so forth and moving, it's, it's not easy. The, the target area that they've recommended has, has shrunk over the years. People still recognize what they are and there's still a, a need for them, but it's kind of shrunk over the years compared to what we did five years, ten years ago with them.
Summertime's a better time. They got less clothing. Uh, Chief Tate, thank you very much for your department, your service. Um, uh, always look forward to the, to the report. Um, keep up the great work.
Great work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council.
Pass that along to your staff also, please.
Moving ahead then.
From all of us.
Nine B, the city bill list is in front of us for, uh, your review. And liaison and administration report, Councillor Lehman?
Uh, what day was it that I went to the joint meeting with the township?
May eighth.
May eighth. Met with the township, um, I guess, first thing is, I felt totally unprepared for that meeting. I had nothing walking into that meeting. All I had was an email that said date, time, and location. But we basically talked about the issues between the county, um, oversight and jurisdiction in the unannexed areas of the township. And the city's, um, future vision, which we haven't quite made yet, of the unannexed areas. And how these two things can work together so that one isn't undoing what the other wants to do in the future and back and forth. So it's a process that we're working on, I guess, and that's the only thing I have in my report.
Alright, thank you. I too on May eighth with Councillor Lehman and city staff met with the township. Um, trying to discuss early, long-term planning. Really kind of the first, uh, first in a series of discussions at the Jackson Township, so, uh, more to come on that. May eleventh, attended scale, uh, I gave a Shakopee as a whole city update about everything that's great about Shakopee. Uh, great presentation there. There was also a presentation we were talking about tonight in a couple of different areas of mental health. Uh, in Scott County, this is a major deal. Um, Chief Tate talked about it, um, what communities are doing. I know there was a big case up in, uh, Forest Lake. Um, Mayor Williams in Savage is a real champion of this, has real experience in it. And, uh, you know, uh, looking at, uh, nothing is before our community, but, uh, just think about if a, if a developer came in or an organization and wanted to build a facility. These are in such high demand, um, about as a council, uh, if we would cite one of them in our community. Um, you read about it, you hear about it, it impacts our police department. Um, so more to come to that. And tomorrow night, Reverend Pond, uh, fundraising event at the Brew Hall at six thirty. Come and enjoy some bingo.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, on the third, uh, the Main Street banquet, you did a great job presenting at that. You failed to mention that, but you missed one. But you did a great job, and our Main Street program is, is doing wonderful work, and they gave out some awards, uh, for the best renovation in, in the Main Street program, or Shakopee Downtown, it's called. And that was Pablo's. Um, the business leader of the year, uh, was Scott O'Brien. And they had one other category, and I'm blocking that right now, I'm sorry, but, uh, we've had some great, uh, information. And new, new businesses come downtown, so things are going well. Um, on the eighth, I had the MVTA, uh, kind of a, uh, committee meeting. I'm working with the, uh, um, separate committee that's working on, uh, the grant, they had a grant proposal through Scott County to talk about some of their marketing needs. And, uh, getting people to know how to ride the bus and use the bus, so I attended that meeting. The committee's the partnerships, uh, creating more.
Connections.
Connections and partnerships with, uh, businesses. Uh, so I had that meeting on the fourteenth. We're developing a plan for new partnership opportunities, and, uh, you know, we've had this, uh, partnership with Amazon in Canterbury. And, um, we have quite an opportunity in our community, and Dakota County. We're looking at the Dakota County Technical Center and, uh, Fairview Hospitals out there. Trying to work with them to get, uh, bus service to those different areas, so, um, been kind of plugged in there and been a little more active with that.
Are they talking about connecting to different hubs like Shakopee to Eden Prairie or to Burnsville stations? Because they all go different places and it really opens up a lot of opportunity.
Right, it does, and, and right now, the connection point is at the Mall of America. Now, Southwest hasn't been, we've made that, haven't made that leap yet. But, uh, to get people to the Mall of America is pretty easy and coming back from there to the Burnsville Transit Station and then out.
But I think you, you brought this up before. I, you know, you can go to the Burnsville Station from Marshall.
Right.
And then you, there's a bunch, a couple of choices there. Right, and if you could get to the Mall of America, which you can from Shakopee.
Well, can you get to the, can you get to the Eden Prairie one from Shakopee?
That's where we're missing the link, but we're, uh, those are partnerships that I think we need to build. The other one is Elko New Market. They're kind of on that cutting edge, and do we want to get a park and ride? It would be an extension of an existing route.
There is one down on Cedar down there.
Yeah, there is, but then a lot of the people from, uh, New Prague and Elko go there, and that, so the, part of the conversation was getting car counts on people that use that. Would, whether or not it'd be useful for Elko, because the New Prague folks would probably get more involved in the park and ride kind of situation, so. We're talking about those opportunities. If you guys think of anything that might be a good business partnership or, or other community partnership, let me know and I'll get that to that committee. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councillor Mokel?
Um, I had Spuck on May seventh, and, um, they first went over their audit, and I left those with Mr. Lily Hogg, so hopefully they've made their way to you. The water report, they were, did cleaning on tank number three, um, on eighty-three, and then, um, they were starting one, four, and two. On April twenty-fifth, they started their flushing program, and then they went through the agreement completing the loop, um, around VAR for railroad pipeline crossing agreement. They still had one, the railroad owns one small strip of land in there, and so they had to get, um, an agreement put into place for that. On the electric side, there was three outages. On the twenty-fourth, they had a squirrel. On the twenty-sixth, they had four customers for ninety minutes. Um, a car had hit a pole, and on five-two at midnight, um, a riser pole failure, but it took them ninety minutes to figure out what had happened. And there were seven hundred and thirty-five customers that were affected. They also had their pole inspection kickoff meeting. Um, most are only about ten years old, but they're hoping for fewer replacements this year as they go through, um, that piece. And then, um, later on in May here, there's, uh, around the twenty-first is what they were, they didn't have the exact dates. All the Shakopee fourth graders will be going to Fairbois to tour the energy park there. So, um, each school has a different date, but, yeah. Very exciting for the kids.
Cool Philly field trip, huh?
I know, right?
It's the Blue Lake.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Reynolds, our administration report?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is something I've already shared with, uh, most of council, but, uh, uh, there was a letter that was in the, uh, Shakopee Valley News titled, "Property values are inflated in Shakopee." So we kind of pulled the numbers on that to try to figure what, uh, this resident's particular issue was. Uh, we, we pulled the evaluation notice and, uh, taxes payable, uh, in twenty nineteen did, uh, the valuation did increase by forty-six thousand three hundred dollars. And that was due to valuation increase. Uh, that's obviously not something that the city has control over. What does that mean when it comes to actual taxes? Uh, his tax statement overall, uh, did increase in twenty eighteen by four hundred and forty-two dollars. He had that valuation in between, uh, twenty, uh, seventeen and twenty eighteen because, uh, the previous year, uh, taxes actually went down by two hundred and twenty dollars. So, uh, uh, you know, the valuation occurred and therefore, uh, the taxes rose. The city and ED ta- EDA taxes increased about eighty-four dollars total, and then again, that was in, uh, And then again, that was in, uh, in response to that increase in valuation. He had some other questions. He inquired if new businesses pay taxes. Yes, they do. Uh, some businesses do receive tax incentives, but these businesses are not receiving a free ride, uh, in regards to property taxes. They have a higher tax rate, don't forget, than residential properties and pay significantly more taxes based on rate and valuation. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that, uh, everybody understood that. The city and county portions of the tax bill's about fifty percent. And other, uh, organizations have about, uh, the other fifty percent, uh, so we'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
That's all I have, sir.
Um, no other business before us here? Counselor Lewis?
How many scouts were on that tour? I sure hope it was more than the three that were here.
I should have asked.
We'll find out, huh?
Any other business before us? Otherwise, we would stand adjourned or entertain a motion. Counselor Lehman?
Motion to adjourn to June fifth.
At seven PM. I have a motion. I have a second by Counselor Whiting. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned at ten twenty-nine.